Yes, the meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called for order. The Chair at this time would like to recognize Councilman James Green, who will introduce the Reverend for the invocation. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pastor McKenzie, would you come and lead us in prayer? He's been with us from Mississippi today.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Lord God, we thank you for today. We thank your God for government. We thank you for officials. We thank you, oh Lord, for Shreveport. We thank you for what you're doing in this city to continue to grow this city and move it forward. We actually bless the leaders who are here today, all the department heads who are here. We actually give them wisdom, give them knowledge, and how you would have them to go, that they may serve your peoples or these people in this city to the best of their knowledge and ability. We thank you right now for the Mayor. Give him wisdom, give him leadership, give him, oh Lord, courage to do the things that are needed to be done and to help make decisions that will bring glory to your name. And we thank you right now. Bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
The Chair at this time would like to recognize Councilwoman Taylor, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Fuller?
Here.
Councilwoman Boucher?
Here.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Here.
Councilman Green?
I'm here.
And Councilman Boucher.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. City Council meeting Tuesday, September 8th. Who was the motion?
Green, then Butcher.
Who gave the motion? Okay, and the second?
Butcher.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? I don't know, Flurry. Has the vote been shown? I'm not seeing it.
It was 7-0.
7-0, okay. If IT is listening, there's two things. I didn't see the vote then, and also, I'm not, the volume is too low. Can you please address that? If not, I'll have to turn it over to Councilwoman Fuller. The next item is, does any council member have awards, recognitions, esteemed guests at this time? None, Chair? Thank you. Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards, recognitions, and distinguished guests?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I would like to first start off by withdrawing Ebony Norris from the nomination from the Civil Service Board. I want to put that on the record. Next, I just want to remind everyone that this week Sport Tran has returned to its regular service routes. Saturday's service will remain on our enhanced alternative COVID-19 schedule. Face coverings are still required in all facilities, bus stops, vehicles. Riders are encouraged to use our contactless fare payment system as well. As always, I want to continue to stress the importance of the census. We need to make sure Shreveport is counted. Anyone who still needs to complete the census can call 844-330-2020. One more time, 844-330-2020. At this time, I would like to have Chief Wolverton and Chief Raymond to come up to recognize firefighter Keaton Dunn, Officer Brent Oats, excuse me if I butchered their name, I'm sorry, and Officer Vanessa Gray for the rescue of a 77-year-old citizen from a house last month.
Officer Oats will come on up?
Wait, Chief, can you say it one more time? I got to get it right.
Officer Oats.
Oats, got it, alright.
And Officer Gray is unable to join us this afternoon, but I'm going to recognize her as well at this time. For the actions taken on Monday, August 24th, when Officer Oats and Officer Gray were dispatched to a house fire in the 400 block of 69th Street. Officer Gray was the first to arrive on scene and observed the southwest side of the house engulfed in flames. After verifying a male subject was inside a residence lying on the floor, she reached in through an open window and grabbed the subject's arm in an attempt to pull him out. Unable to hold onto the subject due to the heavy smoke and extremely hot air Officer Gray was inhaling, she radioed the urgent need for assistance. Officer Oats arrived and attempted to make entry through the window. Unable to gain entry, he wrapped his arms around the motionless subject who was pinned against a wall. As he began to pull the subject, the oxygen tank sitting beside him exploded, injuring Officer Oats' left forearm and hand and hitting the subject in the side. Due to feeling faint from smoke inhalation and the explosion, he had to exit the window without the subject. While Officer Oats and Gray continued in their attempts to rescue the subject from the burning residence by breaking a window on the east side of the room, Shreveport Fire Department personnel arrived on scene and were able to remove the subject from the residence. Both Officer Oats and Officer Gray were courageous in placing themselves in harm's way in their attempts to save the male subject's life. We want to thank them for their efforts, their dedication, and for attempting to render aid to another man under extreme peril.
Certificate of Commendation to firefighter Keaton Dunn for his exceptional performance of duty while responding to a residential structure fire on August 24th, 2020, at 462 East 69th Street. Rescue 9 arrived to find heavy smoke and flames visible from the structure. Members of the family and police officers were yelling that a man was still inside. An SBD officer had tried to get the man but was pushed back by the heavy flames. Rescue 9 crew immediately approached the house, and firefighter Dunn jumped through the window and quickly rescued the elderly citizen from the home, carrying him to the window where his remaining crew were waiting. As firefighter Dunn exited the window, the room became completely engulfed in flames. Your heroic efforts are worthy of commendation, and it's because of your professional training and courage and commitment to serve that the life of this citizen was saved. Get around my hand. City of Shreveport, 22nd day of September. Edwin Scott Wolverton.
Thank you, Chief.
I want to say thank you to all that were involved here. It was definitely a team effort, public safety effort between fire and police to save this citizen's life. I thank you for every attempt that was made, both officers. And I'm glad the citizens were there and family members there, you know, to let everybody know quickly someone was still inside. I'd like to also recognize all the firefighters in the back of the room from his station. They're here to support him. Also, Keaton is part of a family of public servants. His father and his brother, I believe, are here, and they both served on the Caddo Sheriff's Department as law enforcement officers, and his beautiful mother's here also. So, we thank them for being here also.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do Fireman Dunn, you want to say anything? Or Officer Oats, you want to say anything? Good to go? Just quiet servants, I like it. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate you.
Wait a minute. Come back.
Wait, 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 we got to get a picture of you guys.
You didn't get your photo. And you were arranged so nicely, too.
Did the Dunn family want to come up and get in a picture? You're good to go, too, okay.
Come on, Mom. Mom's coming.
When they don't, I have to go down and kiss them.
One, two.
Oh, is his family here? Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wait, one second. I didn't know Officer Oats' family was here. Thanks again, gentlemen, and thank you for the families that are here to support our brave officers. Alright, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Does any member have questions or concerns relative to property standards of Mr. Terrence
Mr. Chairman?
And Mr. Clark, do you have a master plan committee report? And Mr. Clark, I have a question for you when you come to the podium.
Chairman, I don't think everybody heard you for property standards, so there might be some things...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We just got one person for Terrence Green, and then we can go ahead with Mr. Clark, if that's fine.
This is more so relating to the environmental court. I believe they, I'd like for Mr. Green to kind of give us an update of what happened in environmental court when you did your test run, where we are. And we were going to try to do a property standards meeting this week, but we decided to put it off until next week where they could work out those little kinks in the environmental court. But, Mr. Green, if you would, kind of tell us where we are, because I think that's important. We need to get that backlog of cases tended to where we can move forward.
We'll have a trial run on October 20th.
Councilman Boucher, if I may?
Yes, sir.
We had a trial run a few days ago, and then we had another meeting a few days afterwards because we wanted to make sure everything was going to be proper and working correctly, so we're going to defer. We're going to have another meeting, but we're going to try to get the court up and running by November the 17th. We would have been able to get it up by November 3rd, but of course, that's the election time. So, everything should be in place, and we should be ready to go by November 17th.
I want to thank everybody that's been involved, the Mayor, the city attorney, and Terrence, of course, for getting this together. I mean, this is something that we've never done in the city of Shreveport, and I think it's going to be an asset to our city and will make our city more beautiful than it is right now. So, I want to thank y'all for the hard work, and a little bit of a delay to get this up and running is well worth it if we're doing it right.
We're doing it right.
Thank you, Terrence.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Terrence.
Anybody else?
Thank you for everything that you've been doing to help us with Dawn's seafood. I know we've got a lot more to do with that and a few other things, but I appreciate your attention to it.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to appreciate you for helping with public work, with some of the pickup and cleanup they've been doing during the storm, so thank you and just thanks for that.
Alright, ready to move on?
Mr. Clark is approaching the podium now.
Mr. Clark? I can't see you, but I...
Yes, sir.
I hope you...
You said you had a question for me, Councilman Flurry, I was just listening.
Okay, what I have a question about is, the billboard people, and this has to do with master plan committee report, the billboard people that put up the billboards, aren't they responsible, as I remember in previous meetings, that they were responsible for keeping the grass and all the weeds underneath the sign cut?
They are responsible for the beautification of the billboards. That's one of the requirements of billboards, that they are maintained. And if at a later time, offline, if you'd like, there are some that you want us to look into, we'd be more than happy. I'll just refer your concerns to zoning enforcement to check out all the billboards.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead with your report.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor, we did have a master plan advisory committee meeting. We finally got a quorum. We had representatives from the City Council and the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and we were able to elect officers for that advisory committee in order to start the work that they will be doing going forth. As I shared with you last time, the COVID pandemic slowed our progress down tremendously. We were having meetings with residents in the parish, and we were having neighborhood meetings within the city limits, and once we were shut down, that process ceased. But we're still reaching out to neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are the most important aspect of life, we believe, in the city of Shreveport, and we are reaching out to neighborhoods to ensure that neighborhoods, as recommended by the master plan, are organized, are functioning, and are developing neighborhood plans to give us an idea of the desires, the goals, and the aspirations of those neighborhoods. We're still in contact with those neighborhoods, and in future meetings, we are in the process, and we have gotten a commitment from the administration, the Mayor, and Chief Wilt Whitehorn, that we are updating the master plan. And by updating, I mean that we're just reviewing all of the action items. We thought we were on a good track to providing that information, but the information was inconclusive, and now we're going back and making sure that all of the different departments and all of the different organizations within the city of Shreveport that had responsibilities and had action items and recommendations have addressed those in one way or the other. And when I say one way or the other, I mean that there's progress, the recommendation has been completed, or no actions have been done. And those where no action has been done, it is very important, and the administration has shared with me that they're very supportive of this, that some attention is given to those recommendations, whether those actions are, we just don't plan to do this, we have no desire to approach this goal, or we just haven't had time. And whatever those actions are, we will be better suited to follow those. Once we get those in a format that's public-ready, we will present those to the master plan advisory committee, which you have representation on. And we will, we're halfway through the master plan. We have 10 years to go before we should be achieving the goals of the master plan. We have every intention of meeting those goals, and we're poised to do all of the things necessary in the master plan recommendations to, like you've just said, to make our city more beautiful, make our city more prosperous, make our city be a place, a destination, a wonderful place to visit and eventually live in. And that's all I have for the Council at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I think you're on mute, Councilman Flurry.
Am I right? He might be.
It seems like you're on the mute. Did you unmute yourself? Councilman Flurry, unmute the microphone, you're muted.
Yeah, that would have helped, wouldn't it? Councilwoman Fuller, would you please take over the meeting? I'm having some difficulties with this. I still want to vote and participate, but I'm just having a hard time hearing.
Yes, sir. We, we have no public hearing. Mrs. Ewing, is there any legislation to be added today?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have the following public comments. And remember, you have three minutes for your comment. Please give your name and address before you start.
Jumped way ahead. My name is Roger Dekay. I live at 1069 Box Hall Drive in Shreveport, 71106, and I am here to talk about, my glasses are fogging up and I can't see, rezoning of property on the corner of East 71st Street and Fairfield. This was discussed at the MPC meeting, the most recent MPC meeting, and it was voted, well, the first vote was 4-3 in favor of the rezoning, and then evidently, there was some malfunction that was revoted, and it turned out against us, 3-4. But, with that being said, we feel the owner and the prospective purchaser and prospective business owner/operator feel like, for several reasons, this should be rezoned. It's already C2, and we're requesting it be rezoned to C3. This particular corner has been out of commerce and unused for decades. It was originally a parking lot for a grocery store, I believe it was a Winn-Dixie. The current taxes, historically, since it's been unused, the taxes are $33 a year, and I guarantee you that if we open a business on it, they'll go up considerably. As I said, it's already C2, and is this an overhead? I have a map that shows where it is, and I have no idea how to make this work. Oh, okay. Operator error. So, the property in question is this lot, a couple of lots, this corner. And as you can see, all of this is already zoned C2, and we want to just take this one corner and go to C3, similarly to this corner. This corner on East 70th and Fairfield, what is that? I can't see. 69th Street, pardon me, and Fairfield is C3 and surrounded by residential, and it didn't seem to cause a problem there, and we would like to change this to C3, and it will be in line with the C2. The site is already all concrete. It's a big, thick concrete slab. There's a fence between the property and the next-door neighbor. The site plan, if we get this approved, this site plan will still have to be approved, and you can then...
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Time is up? Okay.
But there may be a colleague of mine that might have a question for you that might give you more to explain.
Okay, that's fine, well, I pretty much got in there.
Mr. DeCal, just say thank you for coming. I believe, now Councilman Butcher, I got confused about $30 million hotels location a couple of weeks ago, but I think this is in my district.
About a block.
Okay. I welcome you to give me a call, and I'll talk to anybody who has opposition to this rezoning before it comes up for a vote in a couple of weeks, and we'll try to get on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much.
Wajid Shakil? My apologies if I mispronounced your name, sir.
Yes, this is Wajid Shakil, and I have a business on East 221 East 70th by 70th Street and Southern Avenue. I've been serving this area around 16 years.
I'm sorry, sir, I need you to give your address, please.
Yes, it's 221 East 70th Street.
Thank you.
Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. And I have had that business almost 16 years, and I'm serving that area for a long time. And I see that parking lot empty for a long time, too. So, I was, I'm thinking it'd be good if it's, if it's, that lot can be generate some revenue, like I'm generating some revenue for the city. So, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. This is Mr. Rafiqul Islam? I give your address, and then you can start your three minutes.
My name is Rafiqul Islam, 150 Carroll Street, Shreveport 71105. I'm the one who won't buy this property and put in the car lot. I've been this neighborhood, I talked to, I met that there four neighbors, all of them they're positive. One of them say they should be doing the car lot or some businesses, because the empty lot is caused to crime the night time, especially the people come there and shouting and noisy disturb us. Although if you put a car lot, it will be closed around 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And other, all of them, they give the good, I submit all the letters, the four letters, their phone number, their email. Have any question, please let me know. Thank you.
So, your intent is to have the car, you're needing rezoning to have a car lot at that location?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But, thank you, I think I have, we, okay. Thank you, sorry.
My name is Jennifer Houghton, and I'm here to represent the buyer for the property. I showed him several properties up and down 70th Street and Mansfield Road, and we found this property. It's close to his home. It also is a perfect location that won't use as big of an expense to put there since it's already got the concrete pad. We found up on 70th Street that there's a lot of complimentary businesses that would go with the parking, with the used car lot. There's a transmission, and DMV has a short order kind of thing there. The other thing that we were encouraged to do was to really get out and talk to the neighbors, and I know that he went out, and we've turned in five letters that are of the neighbors that have said yes, they would encourage the business there. They feel like it might give some work to teenagers there to come in and wash cars or do some other work in there and help out with that. So, the zoning is all, like Roger said, is all C2, all through there on both sides of that street. So, he talked to all the homeowners except one who wasn't home, and they all encouraged him to try to go forward with it.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chair.
Oh, Councilman Butcher?
Just real quick, I just want everybody to know that speaking today, that we will not vote on this until October the 13th. So, I didn't want y'all to hang around expecting a vote today.
Right.
It requires two reads, so, I mean, you're more than welcome to speak, but I just wanted to let you know that it'll be October 13th.
Yeah, we just wanted to present it to everyone so they had information, and if we needed to answer anyone's question.
I appreciate it, and we encourage you to come back on the 13th as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think the reason I paused is, we've had, we haven't had a lot of car lot zoning come up, but the one that did, I was like, why is the MPC, why did they vote against it? Now, things are ringing a bell in my head, but, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Tarsha Jefferson here? She mentioned that there were letters, I think that these are, I have four letters in favor. I don't know if they're here, I'll do a roll call. Monir Hussain? Alvin Randall? And Zakiya Ali? Those were four letters in favor of that same zoning. Ron Michada? Is Mr. Michada still here? While we're waiting on him, Madam Clerk, after this, are we able to suspend the rules to take up the matter of the, of the liquor store? Of that, okay. Yeah, it takes a two-thirds vote, but you guys want to suspend the rules. Then after we finish public comment, then I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take up that appeal. the rules so that we can take up that appeal.
Ron Michota, six-two-eight Stoner, Shreveport. I'm here on behalf of the landowner in this appeal case. I'm filing a motion today to not allow the suspension of selling alcohol for one year. I'm filing that on constitutional grounds. The motion deals with, this is taking property without a hearing and due process. So what happened in this situation, the Chief, Ben Raymond, sent a letter out on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty. I represent Mr. Michael Hassan, H-A-S-S-A-N. The letter is addressed to Right Way Liquor Store at seventeen-fifty Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, Shreveport, and to a gentleman named Hassan, A-W-A-D. In no time did my client, the landowner, the building owner, got any notice of a hearing. In the letter that the Chief sent out on March third, twenty-twenty, it says, "I hereby respectfully request the revocation of the alcohol permit for the Right Way Liquor Store. In addition, I am requesting the provisions of the City Ordinance ten-one-oh-three-B be utilized, and all alcohol sales are suspended for a period of one year." My client is the owner, he, he has no control over what his tenant does. I will remind you, when you hear from Officer Bradley and the Chief, my client, the landowner, has never been cited for any violation, the landowner has no notice, and for you to take a right away from him, he has to have due process. And for those reasons, we're objecting to any action by the City Council today that would deal with suspending the alcohol selling of that particular location, because we've not had a due process hearing from Mr. Hassan. And I'm gonna ask the Council not to vote on that portion of it today, and Mr. Thompson represents the tenant, and he's got his own arguments today, but that's the objection I'm making today, and I have informed the City Attorney, Mr. Littier, that I was filing this motion today, and at some point today, I'm going to ask the Council to vote on that particular issue. I pointed out to Mr. Littier earlier today that this is just like the Dillard situation. Dillard's has had two shootings in thirty days, and their landlord is a company out of Indiana. Are we going to prevent that company from leasing Dillard's to someone if y'all decide that you need to go in and pull Dillard's license?
I'm sorry, that's your time, but someone may have asked, may have questions for you that will give you more time to speak, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Colleagues?
Ma'am?
Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Michota, good afternoon. My understanding was that this hearing was continued to today at, at your request and Mr. Thompson's request, is that, is that right?
That's correct, because we didn't get notice the last time. We, I'd sent an email to Mr. Arthur Thompson, telling him that Mr. Thompson and I were representing, I represented the landowner, he represented the tenant, and we got a call an hour or so before the meeting saying we had a hearing. I then contacted Mr. Ron Littier and the Clerk of the Council, and that email had gotten buried somewhere in Mr. Thompson's, um, computer. And so we got no notice, and never got a notice from the Chief or the Mayor with his approval, because the Mayor has to approve all this, that they were going to attempt to take from Mr. Hassan his right to lease his property. And for those reasons, that's why I'm here today, on behalf of Mr. Hassan, but we've never got formal notice.
But Mr. Hassan knew that this hearing will be conducted today, and that's, that's why you're here today. Is that, is that right?
Well, actually, he didn't know, someone called him and, and informed him, and then he informed me, and that's how I'm here today.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Over here, ready. Here, and I prefer for the Chief's office to present, we're being received from here.
Any other colleagues with questions for Mr. Michota or Mr. Thompson?
I just have one statement. We're not here to take away his right to lease his property. He still has his right to lease his property. That's not before the Council today.
Thank you.
But, but, but it is a liquor store, Mr. Littier, and you are taking his rights without a hearing and due process, and it's simple as that.
I'm, I'm not taking his right, I just want to make sure that they're aware, the, the issue today is not to take away his right to lease his property. The issue is taking away the right to sell liquor on his property. That's the issue before the Council, so we need to make sure that-
That's, that, that's what that particular piece of property is, is a liquor store. There's no other use for that piece of property. So, what you're doing is taking property without a hearing, and without a trial, and without due process.
I got you.
You know it, I know it.
Mr. Michota, I'm gonna have to stop you there, because we're still in public comment, we're not gonna try to try this as a case right now.
Ma'am, he asked me a question, I'm responding to his question.
It was more that he was giving us some information so that we could deliberate.
He directed his question to me, but I understand.
Thank you.
If, if, if I may address the Council, and for the record, my name is Dew Thompson, my address is seven-six-oh-seven Burn Avenue, Suite four-oh-two, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-oh-five, and if the Council Minutes and Record could reflect that, I am enrolling as Council of Record for Mr. Awad Hassan and Badan Liquor Mart, which is doing business as the Right Way Liquor, which is a store at issue in this case for today. And if this is the public comment section at this point, I can certainly defer my evidence until the actual hearing itself, but I would join in on Mr. Michota's motion to the extent that if his relief is granted in this case, it certainly affects my, my, my client's relief is tied to his, to a certain aspect, and so to keep all the evidence together in the interest of saving resources and doing one hearing, if the Council grants Mr. Michota's hearing, I would respectfully ask that my client's hearing also tag along and be continued at the same time, so that we can present it all in once. It's my appreciation that the Council may have already taken some evidence from citizens' input when Mr. Michota and I were not present, so to that extent that minutes need to be reviewed, recordings need to be reviewed, and evidence needs to be reviewed, I would certainly put forth the, in joining in with his request. We have offered stipulations, if his request is granted, to bring the matter back and to put measures in place to hopefully make the Council feel better in addressing his motion. Some of those measures that we have asked to put in place were within Consulta-, excuse me, consultation with the Chief of Police. This is better security measures, better lighting measures, video cameras, security guards, and any other recommendations that the Shreveport Police and the Council want to give to make this business even more safer than we can possibly put in place for that. So to the extent that that consideration is on the table, we would certainly respectfully ask the Council to consider so, and then I will defer my evidence presentation to the actual hearing. And I'll certainly answer any questions that the Council has, too.
Before anyone that might have a question, I'll let you know, we are gonna suspend the rules, take this up after public comment.
Yes.
We're gonna vote on doing that. But I don't mean to put you in the spot, Councilwoman Taylor, but if I'm remembering correctly, at the last meeting, after you said that we'd be deferring this to this meeting, did we hear any public comment on this?
One.
Okay. Just one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It was my appreciation, though, that there may have been some public comment taken in the January twenty-twenty meeting, and if, if that was correct, then that might be additional evidence that needs to be reviewed.
She wasn't here.
But I guess, I guess other members may could. If, if that's not the case, then it's not the case, but it was our appreciation that-
Ms. Taylor joined us in-
May.
May.
And this might have been under, I think, Councilman Bradford at the time may have presented and taken evidence on this issue.
Well, there's always been, excuse me, Councilwoman, there, there have been several times that members of the public have come up and spoken ill towards this particular area, so that has been an ongoing discussion that we've had, but not a hearing or nothing of that sort, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, Councilwoman Fuller, is, is there a public hearing on the, on the appeal for the liquor license?
I'm just showing it as an appeal.
So comments, it won't be open comments for that, and I can do my comments, or what?
Madam Clerk, is that correct, or are we just taking public comments now, and then we'll take up the appeal for discussion?
I'm sorry, I was messing with the printer, what was your question?
We won't have a hearing for the appeal, we'll just take it up for discussion at that point, correct?
So, so, so the public would be able to make comments at that time?
No, sir.
During the actual hearing, there's not a public comment, the Chief of Police will present his case, and Michota and Mr. Thompson will present their case, but public comments on it need to be taken now.
This is the only opportunity for public comment on that.
Okay.
But we're taking it up right after public comment, so it's, there's not gonna be a hold.
Right, it's just that I had other comments on another subject, but thank you very well. Marvin Mohammed, twenty-eight, zero-eight, Hershey D. Wilson, I did have comments on another subject, but since this is on, on the agenda for today, I do want to say that I, that I support, in, in this matter, Police Chief Ben Raymond for sending out information to actually shut down, really, the, the place needs to be shut down. Let's just be clear, we had two young black males that was killed, murdered, in that parking lot. I noticed that, and he can, and he can speak to this, but I believe that the attorney on record for the land, for the so-called landowner, his family or himself is actually a part-owner of that property. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused about why, you know, why he would represent something of that nature when he's actually speaking up for himself or his family members. Right Way Liquor is, is, is nothing more than a, has been nothing but a, a house of death for the MLK community. The cause of service there is longer, is longer than the ease is from the, from the West. At some point, as we try to rebuild neighborhoods, as we attempt to try to make neighborhoods safe, we have to speak into these, into these, into these dens of death that, that mass raised as opportu-, as tascaliers of our people, but bring no positive return. Well, although the city of Shreveport does receive income tax from this location in the thousands of dollars yearly, it's, that's the, that's the only, that's the only benefit. They sell drug paraphernalia that is legal to sell on the inside of the store, but if so happens, a Shreveport police officer pulls me over a half a mile or a mile down the street, he then has proper cause when he sees the same items that they're selling illegally behind the counter if he sees the land on my front seat of my car. That's now, I, I can be now charged with number one, drug paraphernalia, and two, I'm now, I'm now subject to submit, to, to search of my vehicle. These places cannot continue to exist into our neighborhoods. This isn't the first case. This has been a repeated, this has been a repeated example of just gross neglect, even the argument that Attorney Michota had with it, he's trying to advocate the, the, the landowner totally free, when he, when this landowner has indeed been represented by him before. This is, this isn't the first time. At some time, and this is what they're doing, this is something that Councilman Nicholson that we spoke about. Not only that, but they're not, they're not even in non-conforming use. They just, daycare centers, we have a, we have a high school that's right down the street from it, we have a elementary school that's right down the street from it, we have a daycare center that's right down the street from it, we have a church-
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask him one question. When you say that there's been reference to this before, can you speak to that again?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Again, I, I don't have that information with me particularly about the cause of service, but there's been numerous, numerous, numerous cases of, of cause of service at this location. They, they, they attempted to belittle the deaths of two citizens, went in a twelve-month span by saying about a shooting that happened at the, at the mall, to suggest that that place isn't a, 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 a haven for death. We, we, this Council, this city has to protect its citizens. And again, I stand with Chief Raymond, I'm gonna put it on the record, I stand with Chief Raymond in, in, in this case. He must be allowed as the chief enforcer of the City Shreveport Code of Ordinances, be given the right and the latitude to do just that when he sees a problem. If not, we just run him up.
Mr. Antoine, Prentice Street?
Starting this. Good evening. My name is Anthony Davenport. My address is five-six-zero-four Prentice Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-oh-eight. I am here on behalf of Stephanie Kalani, who is the family member of Cortez Woods. I'm also the cousin of Jeremiah Davenport. Both of their deaths occurred at the Right Way Liquor Store. Cortez Woods was killed November the sixth of two thousand nineteen, Jeremiah Davenport was killed October the twenty-third of two thousand eight. I first want to say that I am not here holding the Right Way Liquor Store accountable for the deaths that occurred. My issue and standpoint today is first, there are nine liquor stores in this area, for one. Secondly, like the man stated, it's a hangout spot. It condones a lot of unhealthy, safe, and just unruly behaviors at their location in itself. And myself and Stephanie have been working hand to hand to create a better environment for the Cooper Road community, for the children and for the adults that need those help and resources, and I feel that strongly, the shutdown of it can start a beginning of a better Cooper Road. And I also have with me today a statement, which was written by Ms. Stephanie. She's not able to make it here today because she's actually on active duty, she's in the service, so I don't know if I have time to read, but I read, read as much as I can. She stated, "I want the mayor, councilman, and whoever else is able to make or influence decisions regarding closure of toxic, toxic, I'm sorry, toxic businesses that pollute our neighborhoods and cities that really do no good for our people to know that we have worked tirelessly for nearly a year to seek some form of justice for our loved ones who were both brutally murdered at the establishment in question, Right Way Liquor Store, and who we will never get to laugh with or embrace again. The whole ordeal is sad, hurtful, and unfortunate, but my family has confidence knowing the justice will ultimately be served whether in this physical world or beyond. Not a single person been able or willing to offer us any answers, so we are no longer seeking them, but we are willing and will continue to seek justice, and justice to me and my family is the closure down of this store in hopes of preventing future serious altercation and/or even deaths. The owner of this store are really not concerned with the health of the community or the people in it, they're more concerned with the profit of the people, with little to no concern of the risk associated. It has to stop, and we have to stand for positivity and rebuilding our community. So I'm asking Mayor and other leaders present today to please keep the overall needs of the community, primarily safety, in mind when moving forward. We would like to see this business closed down and the physical, physical location turned into something more positive to help benefit the citizens of this area." And that just concludes my comments for today, thank you.
Thank you. If you would like, you can turn that into the Deputy Chief Clerk, and she can add that to the record.
Thank you.
This is Herbert Rogers? Herbert Rogers? This is Herbert Rogers?
Herbert Rogers, 1920, Mishawas, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I would just like to see the place closed, because on Friday nights and Saturday nights, it's in a curb and it's dangerous. I've almost hit two or three cars in that curb at night. I just think the place needs to be closed. They have fights up there, and you have about 30 or 40 cars in the parking lot, and I yield the rest of my time to Ms. Rogers.
Is she on the time, Ms. Rogers? Where's Ms. Irma? Is she coming up?
Ms. Rogers.
Can we do that? You've been yielded two and a half minutes, Ms. Rogers.
Okay, for that two and a half minutes, based on what Mr. Rogers has said, that piggybacks off of several elderly senior citizens in the area. Back on March, name and addresses, I have the name and addresses. I'm sorry. Irma Rogers, 1920, Mishawas, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. Okay. Standing to represent with my husband's category, many of those senior citizens who cannot be here due to COVID-19. We're currently working on things to keep them stabilized within the community, but we have several of those members who have complained to our organization, MLK Community Development Corporation, about this business. They've complained about the traffic that it alludes to, generally on the weekends, including Sundays, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. They've complained about the loitering. There have been complaints about the littering, including across the street at some of the other businesses. There are two other businesses across the street on the corner from this, on Russell Road and MLK. So that age group, they are speaking about our community and the changes from there being more and more liquor stores within the area, and not commerce in terms of healthy atmosphere, grocery stores, pharmacies, things of this nature. Those are the changes that they have spoken to our organization about them wanting to come within the area. So basically, I'm representing hundreds of people in the MLK Cooper Road area who own property, who've been there for more than 50 years, and still own their own homes, still keep their yards up, still want to see a thriving and vital community, something akin to what they grew up in the 50s and the 60s. This is not the type of business they want for a thriving community. Is that the time?
You have 28 seconds.
28 seconds. Thank you very much for your attention. I'll do the rest of it on my time.
Ms. Rogers, how come you bring Mr. Rogers in here to mess up all my rules and try new stuff on me?
I am so sorry. My apologies, please.
It all worked. I guess I'll pick up my feet today.
All right, thank you.
Mike Hassan? Kill him hard. Mr. Ex-Chairman Bowman just looked at me and giggled at me.
Again, Ron Michauda, 628 Stoner, Shreveport. Mr. Hassan's going to withdraw his request to speak. Thank you.
Is there Amal Hassan? Hassan Amal?
Same, Mr. Hawat. He had signed up for the public comments section to just reserve the fact that he was going to be able to speak either in the public comments section or the hearing, so we'll withdraw and wait for the hearing.
Tanya Robertson? Okay, there is a written statement here. And it is in opposition to the liquor store. Ms. Sandra Mack, also a written statement. In opposition. Kenneth Kreft?
Kenneth Kreft, 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport, 71105. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, get ready for the Senior Olympics. Rest of the council, I want to start out by saluting firefighter Keaton and Officer Gray and Officer, difficult to pronounce, the other one. These are people who need a pay raise. Mayor Tyler gave a small pay raise, two years ago, about 3%, kind of a Band-Aid on an arterial bleed. We need to bandage it before, we need to amputate the limb. 2002, as I appreciate from our chief, last time we had a significant pay raise. How did we do that? We passed a quarter percent sales tax under Mayor Hightower. The next 10 years saw significant slowing, not an elimination of attrition. You don't ever eliminate attrition. People move, they retire, they have family issues, but we've got to reduce the rate of attrition in our public safety departments. My 22nd time, going back to September of '08 under Mayor Glover, on the 22nd of the month. Let's get serious and have a public safety committee meeting with the three-week gap, which Chairman Butcher alluded to two weeks ago, and get public comments and see what we can do. I'm still thinking a 2/10% proverbial Lincoln on a Lincoln. Shreveport, according to the census, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're still trying to get finished, and there's a court hearing this morning in the Ninth Circuit in San Jose, so hopefully we'll be given more time. It's not like there've been fires and pandemics and hurricanes or anything, right? So we've got people from all over helping us, coming into Shreveport, from many states, good census people. But let's see if we can come up with a reasonable solution. The census in 2017 reported the median income, above which and below which, half of us earn, in Shreveport, about $36,300. When you take out federal state withholding and Medicare and unemployment and FICA, Social Security, the average Shreveporter's left with about $24,000, and about two-thirds of that is spent at retail. So the average Shreveporter spends about $16,000 at retail in a year. And let's not do a fee. A fee is prohibited. It'll be expensive. 98% of Shreveporters pay more with a $7 garbage fee y'all passed than a 2/10% sales tax. The only few who pay less are those earning significant incomes, the top 2 percentile. The recycling, as I said in John's paper last Friday, titled Sales Taxes, Recyclant, I'm Arthur. Let's see, let's look at that maybe. I don't know the appropriate committee that handles recycling. It might be infrastructure, it might be public safety, but it's fixing to end soon legally. And finally, let's not bar $35 million if we only need 10 or 12 million. Thank you.
Sorry, your time's up.
Thank you. Y'all stay safe, everybody.
Ms. Rogers, I'm going to let you reclaim your actual time that you signed up for, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Kreft.
Good afternoon, Councilman Fleury, out of the chambers, but present. So glad to see you. Vice Chairman Levett Fuller, Mayor Adrian Perkins, CEO Henry Whitehorns, and all of our other comrades for this city council. I come bringing you greetings from MLK Community Development Corporation. On November 14, 2019, Ms. Antoinette Davenport attended one of those meetings, which we had an attendance of about 50 persons, about 30 or so of them signed up. I have the sign-in sheet here. Her primary concern, and at that meeting, Chief Ben Raymond was also present to answer questions. If memory serves me correctly, Chief Ben Raymond explained to Mr. Hassan and Mr. Hawat that they were not here to close anyone's business down. They were simply there to hear comments and get an understanding of what the community wanted. And at that meeting, that is exactly what happened. Basically, those persons in attendance were overwhelmingly, in the majority, of saying that this store poses a problem within our community. As the president of this organization and representing those persons from the community base, that's why I'm here. The nine liquor stores that Ms. Davenport alluded to are King's Liquor, ANY Quick Stop, Lowmark Groceries, Quick Pack Grocery, High Low Grocery and Liquor, King's Grocery, Right Way Liquor, Shell Service Station, Brookster's Grocery. That is nine places within a four-mile stretch. The four-mile stretch begins at Southern University and ends at North Market. All of those are within our community. You take that same four miles from King's Highway to Seventh Street, you can include go across a little bit, you're going to have Thrifty Liquor, there's a Shell Service Station, Kroger's Grocery Store, and if you go across Seventh, you're going to go past Seventh. That's four miles. Sam's. Okay? Look at the difference within our community. Look at the difference in a community on the east side of town. That is the problem. The things that I mentioned are the things that we've been fighting for so many years. They're talking about the MPC. I served on CAG for that, Community Advisory Group. We need sound ventures, wholesome business adventures. We need grocery stores, pharmacies, for your largest African-American community in this city, second-largest in the nation. That's what we need. Ask us, why are there nine with our community? Why is there so much high unemployment with our community? Half the time, the people are inebriated. Perhaps, and we mentioned this point back in January, I believe, Mrs. Nicholson, we were talking about what times the liquor store closed, they were given until 4:00 a.m., from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. within a community. That's just not good. If they were shut down, I'm almost certain these deaths did not occur between 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. or 9:00 p.m. or even 10:00 p.m. And I can call names, Mrs. Ely, Mrs. Humphrey. If you want the address, Mrs. Ely's on Bunny Street, Mrs. Humphrey's on Sidney Street, Mrs. Harris. All of these people are people who are ten. Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Rogers?
I have a chair.
Councilman Nicholson?
Ms. Rogers, I just want to say, as I've said in the past, how much I appreciate you and your advocacy for your community. I'll also say, without expressing an opinion about the hearing today, I'm going to listen to the evidence and make a decision based on what's prevented. But if I wouldn't approve a liquor store in your neighborhood, or my neighborhood, I want to approve it in your neighborhood. And if a liquor store couldn't operate in a manner that endangers people in my neighborhood or my district, I'm not going to approve it in somebody else's district. So thank you for being a voice of reason on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Albert Brown. Mr. Brown? You've got two slips in here, but I need you to put them both in at one time.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Albert Brown, 439 East 81st Street, this wonderful city of Shreveport, Louisiana. I talked to Ms. Fuller just a few minutes ago about the one on Tulane, because I seen it on news, and I went to those peoples, and I don't think some of them are here, but we went down that street and we seen it, and the concrete is ridiculous and everything. So they're trying to get you, me and you talked about that, and we're going to see about that. Mr. Bosch, I've been calling you and calling you and texting you. You won't get in touch with me because City Girl wants some answers. So would you please, me and you need to talk, okay? Also, y'all know, because I care ministry, this is my ministry, and y'all know I come around with positive things. But there, me and Mr. Bowman talk, and some of the people in the city that they're trying to figure out, like King Crab, Crab King, and Orlando, and Cat Daddy, all these black-owned restaurants are not getting the recognition they're supposed to get because everything that Ms., that lady, I mean Rick Row, he goes around with white people. And Crab King told me, he said, "Man, I'm making this kind of money, and we don't get the recognition to show that we're positive here in Shreveport too." And they want the recognition to come down here and get certificates up. And they asking that why can't they get the certificates that the other people get? And so that's what one of the questions, like I said, I come here with positive energy now. I don't come here negative. But we want to show our city is growing, not going down. Because I get so tired of people telling me about Shreveport ain't doing Shreveport. Shreveport is a thriving city, and we have a positive vintage here. And I don't let people put us down. So I'm asking that, would we please give them some recognition, not just show that they're not doing something, but they are doing something here in Shreveport? Any questions?
I'm going to piggyback on that. One, when we were sworn in, the mayor actually took us all to lunch at Orlando's. Two, I'm going to name drop my friend Chris Jay, who used to work for the Tourism Board. And they told him, "You can keep doing your personal blog, or you can keep doing that, but you're fired. You have to leave." And Chris Jay said, "Okay, I'm going to keep doing my personal blog." And he's written about a lot of our local restaurants, in particular restaurants in black neighborhoods. He actually was helpful in getting the stuffed shrimp festival started. And I remember him calling out and saying, "I really wish the people that love to talk about restaurants on the east side of I-49 would actually go to the west side of I-49 and see what good restaurants we have over there." He was recently in the New York Times with a restaurant that's actually in Bossier, but it's one that's kind of off the beaten path, Lucky Palace. But there are people that are really looking at what we do and celebrating it, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yes, because like I said, y'all know I'm not Democrat, I'm not Republican, I'm not black, I'm not right, white. I'm what we're supposed to be, right. And like I said, I want our city to be recognized that we are doing something here. Now, I'm going to say this before I sit down. I told Mr. Bowman, I called him, and I said, "I'm going to pay for your lunch, you know, free," so he going to go with me. So I don't know, you know, he going, so me and Mr. Bowman going to Crab King.
So if I get Tulane fixed, I get to go to lunch?
You can go too. Anybody else want to go? You can go too, because they want some recognition.
Does that count as a bribe, Mr. Saddle?
So they, so me and Mr. Bowman, we're going to go, but me and Mr. Bosch, we need to talk. All right. Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a good day.
Mr. Brown, Pastor Brown. Sammy Mears?
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. The joke of the day is, who's the queen of the pen and pencil cases? The ruler of the throne. Now, on the other side, going from the ridiculous, I come today to talk about two things that are bothering me, and I can squeeze these in. I need a little help. I don't want to see the holiday events be canceled because of the COVID-19, because if that happens, COVID-19 will win. First Presbyterian Church's Advent Noel, Holy Cross's Church Advent Soup Lunches, and First United Methodist Church's Love Feast on Christmas Day. I don't want to see these events canceled because they've been around for a very long time. I've already had a talk and gotten in contact with the people to please not cancel these holiday events because of COVID-19. I really don't know if I'm getting through or not to them. I really hope that I am. If anyone could help me by taking a little time, maybe to talk to them too and contacting them, it would really be appreciated very much, because these holiday events mean a whole lot to me as it does to other people. We have spent many years taking time to come to these events, and we love them very much, and the food, and the time of fellowship and togetherness. Also, for the past several weeks, I've been doing my laundry over at the 24/7 coin laundry, but I've seen eight top-load washers that are not working that should be, and this is just ridiculous. I left a note for the manager to let him know that I've, for him to contact me if he would, but he won't do that, and he won't fix them. It's at East King's Highway, and somebody please just let him know the top-load washers are just as important as doing laundry's front-load washers as well. If you could reach out to this man, or go by and let him know they need fixing too, it would help out a lot. And since COVID-19 has been mentioned today, it can kiss my grins.
Thank you, Sammy Mears.
Get down, Ms. Fuller.
That concludes our request to speak, our public comments. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. A motion from Councilman Green, second, a second from Councilwoman Taylor to take up the liquor store appeal. Councilman Fuller, are you in favor of that right now? We have the revocation of an alcohol beverage permit for Right Way Liquor Store, 1750 Martin Luther King Drive to consider today. Chief Raymond, our SPD representative, and a representative of Mr. Awad, would you please come forward? Mr., you all may be seated while Chief Raymond presents the case for the city.
Before he does, may I make my objection again that I made during the public comment?
Do you mind, would you please just allow him to speak, and then we'll go ahead with you all?
What's that, ma'am?
Let him go ahead and, let Mr. Michetta go ahead and make his objection. But before we begin, we need to offer file and introduce into evidence whatever the clerk records have showing the public comments, as well as the agreement by the parties to have this hearing today, because it was continued from the September 8, 2020 hearing, and it was reset today by agreement of all the parties represented.
Get out of here.
And the record should include information from the SPD, but we'll get to that. So, Mr. Michetta.
At this time, I'd like to file my formal motion objecting to the one-year suspension for lack of notice, due process, and without a hearing. I'm going to offer and introduce into evidence my motion at this time. I would also like to offer and introduce into evidence the original letter sent out for the revocation dated August 17, 2020, to Right Way Liquor Store and Mr. Hassan Awad, indicating what the hearing and the revocation was about. For purposes of the question that Mr. Nicholson asked me earlier, there is nothing in this letter that indicates that we were going to have a suspension hearing on the landowners' issue, and that's dated August 17, 2020. So, there is no notice. The only notice was a letter March 3, 2020, where Chief Raymond made a random comment about all alcohol sales are in suspension for one, a period of one year. And for those reasons, we would object to any testimony concerning a suspension for one year at this time. I'd like to file and offer and introduce that into evidence at this time, if I may. And that's all I have on that issue at this point. Would y'all like to take that up on a motion at this point, or you wanna hear the evidence first, or?
Attorney Lutier, or Madam Clerk, what's your recommendation?
The procedure is that the police chief presents first, and then they will have an opportunity to present, and then the police chief is offered a rebuttal.
Okay.
That's correct.
Then let's continue.
This is, this is not an evidentiary, this is a procedural question.
So, we just need to continue?
She's talking about evidentiary hearing, I'm talking about a procedural question.
Madam Chair, I just would offer that we don't have rules of procedure governing these hearings in the same way that a court does.
Right.
And so, Mr. Michetta is, of course, correct, but in court, a preliminary motion of this nature would be considered and perhaps disposed of before the hearing on merits. I don't think that's how we typically proceed here, and I don't see any harm in just hearing the whole thing and making this decision.
Okay, thank you. Continue with our normal procedures, so. We're going to go ahead and allow for the chief to continue with his, with his case.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I've got a couple of brief comments, and I'm gonna ask Corporal Glass Bradley from our ABO unit to present the evidence. He's gonna do a much better job of explaining the investigation than I will. I was gonna start off by saying that we were approached by Ms. Irma Rogers and several of the constituents and the citizens within the MLK area regarding concerns they had with crime, recent crime trends at 1750 MLK and Right Way Liquor. At that point, according to Section 10 ordinance, our role as the police department is to conduct an investigation into the calls for service and our response, and that's what I contacted Corporal Glass Bradley and supervisor Sergeant Cisco, and had them to conduct that investigation. So, he's gonna present to you evidence today of what that investigation yielded. Technically, that investigation was conducted close to a year ago now, like eight months ago, and as you know, the pandemic kind of put this hearing off, so we do have some follow-up information with regards to what calls for service the police have responded to as of February 2020 through, I believe, the end of August or July. And again, Corporal Glass Bradley will be able to make us all aware of that.
Corporal Glass, before you begin, Madam Chair, I was looking at the letter referred to by Attorney Michetta that's dated August 17, 2020, I believe, is the letter he was referring to. And for purposes of the record, the first paragraph says, "The Shreveport City Council will convene to consider their requests by the Shreveport Police Department to revoke an alcohol beverage permit for the Right Way Liquor Store in Shreveport, Louisiana. The meeting will be held in the Governmental Chamber, 505 Travis Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, on Tuesday, September 8, 2020, at 3:00 p.m. Your case will be heard near the end of the meeting. You are hereby subpoenaed to appear at the above date and time to show cause why the permit should not be revoked." And because I found out that the notice may not have been provided to the attorney, that's why we agreed to postpone it from September 8 to today by agreement of the parties. So, for purposes of the record, the defendant, Mr. Hassan and Right Way Liquor, Mr. Awad, did have notice of the hearing, and I spoke with his both counsel about that by written documentation, changing it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Lutier. Go ahead.
I'm Agent Glass Bradley, Shreveport Police Department, ABO office. I'm here to present the facts. We were told to look into Right Way Liquor, we had received numerous amount of complaints. Also, a petition was submitted to us. So, I started an investigation, and during the last two years, beginning in 2018 to the end of 2019, the business has been one of the most dangerous places in the city of Shreveport. The business has over 100 calls for service, being the location of two homicides in a 14-month period. That's from October of 18 to November of 2019. The, the business property is, is well documented to be a open-air drug sales and loitering This business has committed prohibited acts underlying in the city ordinance of Section 10, 102. The facts producing is the packet that I did email, and I just handed out to y'all. Almost paints a clear picture that it has become an issue for safeties, the safety of the citizens of Shreveport, specifically to those in the MLK neighborhood. During my investigation, I wrote a brief synopsis or a report summary. So, the following information is provided in order to substantiate the request for revocation, alcohol permit for this business known as Right Way Liquor, 1750 MLK, or Martin Luther King Drive. Right Way is a major public safety concern. The constant continuance of violence, violence in this location jeopardizing the safety of its citizens and the, and the community. The community has expressed their concerns about their safety, quality of life, to the police department. Petition was submitted with over 100 signatures, there was 127 signatures from residents from the neighborhood surrounding the establishment. Due to the numerous complaints, the ABO office, we were charged to look into this matter. As a result of this inquiry, we have come to the same conclusion that the business plays a major role in enabling violence in this area. The 102, the 102 calls for service is a lot. I'm trying to, I tried to attempt to put it in perspective, but not only compared to the business in that community, but I took another business in the same demographic. The liquor store at Hollywood and Kennedy has four calls for service in the same 18-month span compared to the 102. During that timeframe, there was four shootings at Right Way, two armed robberies of citizens, two drug busts, five assault and batteries, and the most concerning is two homicides within that short timeframe. The business is owned by Mr. Awad Hassan. He applied for the permit on September 6, 2017. The permit was approved, and he has been listed as the sole owner since. The owner has recently applied to have two more businesses, one in District F at 6976 Jewella, and then that's the old Circle K. He also applied to have another one in District E, 8800 Jewella. And those permits were denied due to extenuating circumstances.
Madam Chair. Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you very much for your presentation. The, the business and the landowner here today are represented by very able counsel, and there may be an appeal of this, so I wanna ask you some questions just to make sure that we have a good record reflecting the work you've done at this business and your findings. First, have there been occasions, to your knowledge, on which this liquor store sold or served alcoholic beverages to persons under 21 years of age?
Yes.
How many times has that happened during the period you looked at?
I researched just for that 18-month timeframe that I was given, and it was at least twice.
Okay, so on two separate occasions, this business illegally sold alcoholic beverages to a person under 21?
Yes.
Have there been separate occasions besides, to you just mentioned, on which the business failed to properly require lawful identification establishing the age of a person to be 21 years or older?
Yes, the ATC, the state has penalized them more than one occasion. I don't have those reports due to state being shut down to COVID.
But, but that's happened on at least one occasion, in addition to the occasions on which they sold alcohol to persons under 21?
Yes.
To your knowledge, has this business sold or served alcoholic beverages to any intoxicated person?
Received a call about a patron leaving out of there, intoxicated, able going in and purchasing some more, and then police were called to come remove him off property. That was February 12, 2019, at 10:00 p.m.
Retail dealers with permits allowing for off-premises-only consumption are required, well, cannot allow any person under the influence of alcohol or any illegal drug to be on the premises. Has that happened at this location?
Yes.
How many times, to your knowledge?
Numerous times, I don't.
Have you received multiple complaints about persons?
The only one I've, was able to pull up was the research was on that public drunk call we received. But the neighborhood community has addressed it to me more than one time, that they're loitering and drinking on the parking lot.
Well, I wanna, I wanna ask the question broadly because we have fairly relaxed rules of evidence. In fact, I don't know that we have any rules of evidence here, but you've received multiple complaints from members of the community that persons under the influence of alcohol or drugs are loitering on this business's property?
Yes, Friday, Saturday nights, the parking lot's full, they're out drinking and doing like.
Based on your numerous interactions with members of the community in the areas surrounding this business, it is a common occurrence that on weekends, people are consuming alcohol and using illegal drugs on the premises of this business? Another prohibition for businesses of this nature is that they may not permit any person under the age of 21 to visit or loiter on their property. Has, has that happened as a separate violation, to your knowledge, from what we've already discussed?
Basically, from the complaints, they're saying teenagers are, you know, just hanging out on the parking lot after hours.
So, you understand, based on your interactions with the community, that in addition to people regularly consuming alcohol and illegal drugs on premises, teenagers regularly loiter on this property?
Yes.
What about prostitution? That's another prohibition. Any knowledge of that? Okay, those are my questions. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Mr. Bradley? Based upon what your findings, what is the recommendation that you and Chief Ben Raymond have for this store?
And the initial letter that we did send out March 3, to counsel, March 3, 2020, is, "We hereby respectfully request the revocation of the alcohol permit for Right Way Liquor Store. In addition, I'm requesting, we're requesting provision of City Ordinance 10-103 be utilized, and all alcohol sales are suspended for a period of one year."
Anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman Bowman?
Yeah, just, what's the, what's the process after that one year?
The process after the one, 12 months and one day, they would have to reapply, that means go through the zoning and make sure they fall in standards.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair. Councilman Butcher.
Corporal Bradley, so this means that no other liquor store would be able to operate there, even if it's owned by a different person for 12 months? Is that correct?
Yes, if the 10-103 is infected.
So, so if the current owner, if, if this tenant license revoked, and I'm trying to wrap my mind around this, if the tenant's license revoked today, and the property owner decides to sell the property because he no longer has a viable tenant, and a new property owner buys that property, still, for 12 months, there can never be a liquor store there?
As far as the tenant, it's a request to remove his alcohol permit, and then the location is 10-103 as the second part of it, to suspend the 911 address.
So, would they have the opportunity to come back to us if a new, if a new property owner bought that property?
That's my understanding, yes.
I believe it's two separate issues, Corporal Bradley, if I'm wrong. I believe one issue is the suspension of the permit for the current license holder.
Okay.
A separate issue related, but separate, is suspension of an alcohol permit for the premises, for the address itself. So, I don't know that you necessarily have to, well, I know you don't. They're two separate issues. One issue is that I want to withdraw the permit from the current permit holder. One issue is that I want to withdraw the permit from the current permit holder, and the second option is I also want to not allow alcohol permit to be issued to that address for the 12 months.
So regardless of who owns the property at that time, no liquor store there for 12 months?
If, if you, if you opted, if the council opted to enact both prohibitions, then yes. If you just enacted the prohibition against the current owner, then that would not have any negative effect toward a future owner. Is that correct?
Yes.
If you didn't, if you didn't also enact a prohibition against the address itself, not being able to issue a permit.
There, there are two separate things we're dealing with.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Nicholson.
Does the current owner of the property we're talking about have multiple liquor stores in the city?
Yes.
How many does he have?
To my knowledge, three.
I, I believe our ordinance allows us to suspend an owner's, all of an owner's liquor store licenses, doesn't it?
Yes.
That hasn't been proposed yet?
Once, if it's suspended here, he will lose his permit at all other locations.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
And that's the owner of the liquor store itself, not the property where the liquor store is, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that second issue was not before the council today, am I correct?
The suspension of the address?
Suspension of the address.
Mr. City Attorney, I understood that we had before us two questions. One issue was whether we would suspend the license for this single location we're talking about, and then the second distinct issue to Mr. Machado's client, whether we would impose a 12-month suspension on the property regardless of the owner of the liquor store. I, I wasn't aware that we were considering suspension of all the applicant's licenses, and that's, that's why I asked.
Neither was I.
Okay, you, so we don't, we don't think, we're not going to take action on that question today, or that's not?
No, I'm, I'm just looking at the property. It's 1750.
Okay, very good, thank you.
But is it automatic, was Corporal Bradley saying that it's automatic that every, after the suspension of this, that all of his stores have to close?
He will lose his, if he has his liquor permit, his liquor, Mr. Awad's liquor permit revoked, that he will lose all three permits for the liquor, not the location.
I've got the fountain of assistance to the attorney-at-facets, which is pointing out that the court of ordnance of Section 10-14 provides that the council may suspend or revoke all of the permits, not that it shall, there may be some other provision, but I bet, I'm operating at that understanding, I'm not looking to take action against the man's other stores.
Well, that's, that's.
But I think that's what we're doing.
That's where I'm at, I mean, unless you have proof that these other stores are operating serious.
I have submitted two denials for the other two stores due to violations.
But he does, he does not have a license there now?
He's been operating without a license.
Does anyone have anything else?
I think Debbie answered my question.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Awad?
Yes.
You can present.
Madam Counselor Chair, are we allowed to question the witness in this forum?
Provide your rebuttal if there's any questions that come up, he can come up.
I'm sorry? Okay, well, if my client can come up, come on up. May please the counsel, I want to address some of the complaints that were given by the Shreveport Police Department, and I would note that we've had subsequent discussions since this action has arisen before the council on potential remedies that the Shreveport Police Department would be comfortable with doing instead of the drastic and draconian measure of taking away his livelihood for what we would argue are complaints that are not related or cannot be connected to any actions of the owner. And Mr. Nicholson can explain this concept as far as it pertains to the legal arena where this may go, and to that extent, we're arguing that the complaints that are, that are given here, i.e. the shootings, the calls for service, that they don't have anything to do with our client. He's not the one that's selling drugs, he's not the one that's inviting this criminal activity. What happens is based on the recommendations he's received from the Shreveport Police Department to keep his store away from loiterers, from nuisance, from the criminal element, he makes the service calls to the Shreveport Police Department, and that was what I was waiting to hear, is whether or not they had an actual breakdown of service calls that are related to calls that he made for service versus calls that were made against him either for actions that he personally did or actions that were related to or connected to the store. And I don't believe they have any of those. To the extent that the Shreveport Police Department has two citations for selling to underage individuals, the disposition was not put into the record, but it's my appreciation that those were dismissed or null-pressed at the district court level. And again, Councilman Nicholson can explain that when the deliberations come into play, that to charge someone versus proving in a court that they did something beyond a reasonable doubt are two separate and different factors to consider. I would note that my client has availed himself to improvements to make this area safer. He's availed himself to cut his business hours down to prevent loitering, to prevent nighttime activity, to prevent any of the complaints that has been brought by the Shreveport Police Department. He has offered to put 24-hour security surveillance systems in place. He's offered to put a full-time security guard in place. My client has been a business owner in this area for a couple of years now and has contributed extensively to the community. And so to that extent, and I'm glad the gentleman thinks that's funny, but to this extent, that's what the evidence has shown. So what I would respectfully propose to the council in this matter is to look at the complaints that were given by the Shreveport Police Department as, with regards to the causal connection here. When you talk about the homicides, which, again, none of us here are saying, you know, that we deprecate that situation, but that situation happens all throughout Shreveport. It's happened at the Mall of Louisiana here just recently. There was a homicide that occurred inside the mall, to my appreciation, and there's thousands of service calls that go to that area on a daily basis. But we're not sitting here saying we're going to go to that councilman's district and ask him to yank the license of the businesses or in the alternative, punish the store owner from saying, "You can't ever put somebody in this store that wants to operate that type of business." And to that effect, you know, I'm glad Councilman Nicholson made the comments that he made with regards to the liquor stores because as a former prosecutor, I can tell you that I'm aware of numerous stores throughout everybody's district that I can come after this meeting today, and if we're going to have a uniform approach to this, I'm going to address each one of my councilmen and say, "Hey, these, I've got citizens' complaints on these liquor stores in your neighborhood, let's shut those down. Let's shut them down in this district. Let's uniformly shut down all the liquor stores and let Sam's and Brookshire's be the only stores that operate in Shreveport that can sell alcohol." I would respectfully submit to the council that a vacant building, which is where we're heading here on this, if he's kicked out of the business, and if thereafter, not only is his license yanked, but then if the owner of the property's permit is yanked to where he cannot produce any business tenants that sell alcohol there because that's what that building is set for. It's no different than setting up a car wash and saying, "Well, you can't be a car wash, but you can be something else." That business is not designed, and that building's not designed for any other business. So you're basically unilaterally punishing the owner for actions that he has no control over with regards to the business owner, and then you're punishing the business owner for actions he has no control over with the crime here in Shreveport that comes in at times. I would submit to you that if you take away his livelihood, which produces income and tax to the area and the contributions that he produces to the area in the form of donations, and I believe at one point he had donated to the Green Oaks Band, he had made donations to the MLK Development, and he's continued to do so and offered to do so, if you take that away, you're going to have an empty building and you're going to have any criminal element that's complained of by the Shreveport Police Department, by Councilman Nicholson and the other members, you're going to have that migrate to just another area in town, another liquor store. So I would submit that if we're going to close all the area local liquor stores, then let's be uniform about it. Otherwise, we need to apply a rationale with regards to having a causal connection to these complaints. If you can tell yourselves the evidence is linked directly to my client's actions, that he is out there selling drugs, he is inviting the criminal activity, he's encouraging the murders and the shootings to come there, if you have that evidence and that causal link, then take action and take away his license. If you cannot make that leap in evidence and logic, then I would respectfully submit to the council that we have other options here that can satisfy the complaints on both sides of this spectrum. We can appease the citizens to say, "We'll make this business safer. We will do these measures in place to make it safer." And we will do these measures in place that can keep a viable business there that employs individuals in this community and keeps a building from at least being occupied with a business and not with a vacant building. And to that effect, council individuals, I respectfully ask twofold, a twofold request. A, to not take away his license and suspend it, but if you do so, we would respectfully ask if the period can be for a shorter period of time to allow him to do these measures that he's offering to put in place, even if it's on an interim basis to see if crime is reduced, if the complaints go down, if the business viability improves the area. If these measures take place, then we have a reasonable solution. But if we take away his business and we just ask the element to migrate elsewhere with regards to individuals that want to loiter, commit crimes, commit homicides, to just go to another liquor store, then we're not addressing the problem. We are offering a reasonable compromise here, and I would respectfully ask that if that compromise is not taken, that I join in Mr. Machado's motion in saying that the homeowner, um, excuse me, the business owner and the owner of the property should not be penalized for actions that are totally out of their control and that the owner himself should not lose his license as well. And in connection with my presentation and arguments, I would like to offer, file and introduce into the council record what I'll mark as defendant Haywad Exhibit A, and these are signatures from individuals who have attested that they are part of the Cooper Road community and that they would like the Right Way Liquor Store identified at the address at issue here to stay open and continue to be in business. There was an indication that they had 120 signatures. I believe our count on this petition is 270-plus signatures. So there are citizens in this area that exceed the complainants that want this business to stay open because they recognize and understand, and if hearsay is allowed, like it was in the public comments and by the police department, I can attest to individuals that we have spoken to that indicate that they recognize that it's better to have a viable business there instead of a vacant building, that these incidents complained of are 99% of the time out of the control of the business operator. This could happen in front of a liquor store, it could happen in front of a grocery store, flower shop, anywhere here in town to the extent that it's not the business owner or especially the property owner's fault. And so to that extent, I would offer, file and introduce these signatures for consideration And with that, I would make myself available for any questions by the respective council members.
I guess I'll start with my own question.
Yes.
This willingness to take measures to increase security or what have you now?
And to reduce hours of operation.
Why this willingness now instead of 18 months ago or six months ago or 12 months ago after the first shooting?
Well, well, to that extent, when the first notification of this issue came into play with the council, and of course, we've had the COVID delay in this measure, but to the extent, it, it's the same rationale as it is if something happens to another business owner here in town, these individuals are not attorneys, they're not individuals that deal with liability on a daily basis. The best that they understand to do is to say, "Call the police, participate in investigation, and hope it doesn't happen again." There's crime that occurs in all parts of the community where that mindset takes place. It's not a, what do I, that, that's how lawyers think on a daily basis. If something happens, you know, at my swimming pool or my gate falls down or something to that effect, or if, you know, somebody trips and falls at, at a business, I recommend, "Hey, look, you got to fix that sidewalk, you got to do this and that, we got to make changes." That's not the mindset of the majority of individuals in the community. What they hope and pray for is that that's a one-time occurrence and it doesn't happen again. When this issue came before the January council and then got continued, it's, it's been in limbo, and to that extent, this has been the continuous offer of my clients. This is the first opportunity we've had to present this before the council, but these measures have been offered before this council meeting to the chief of police, which I believe he has no objection to putting those measures in place, and I think the police department would support the notion that that would greatly and dramatically reduce crime in that area, or at the worst-case scenario, we could give an interim period to see if it does. If it doesn't, then we know that maybe there is a causal, causal link to the business and it needs to be removed. But if we put that in place.
Have these things not been put in place without, because, go ahead and list again what, what changes you're willing to make?
The changes we're willing to make is, is as follows, that we're willing to reduce business hours to whatever the council feels if it wants to be daylight hours, we're willing to reduce business hours, we're willing to put security cameras in place, a 24-hour surveillance system that notifies not only the business people inside, but the individuals in the parking lot that you're under 24-hour security surveillance. I can all but guarantee that that will probably get rid of loitering, any hand-to-hand drug activity, anything of that measure. Also, to put a security guard during working business hours, because I, I would respectfully submit a lot of these complaints are.
Mr. Thompson, let me just cut you off there. You could have done that without our permission. You didn't need our permission to do that.
Well, here, here's the dilemma we're faced at this juncture, and this is a realistic dilemma, that on the shutdown of this business, these costs are going to be tremendous, but they're willing to put the investment in place. But we're sitting here before the council that's saying, we're getting.
They're no more expensive than the two lives that are already been lost on the property.
I'm sorry?
They're no more expensive than the two lives that are already been lost on the property.
Well, but to that extent, to say the lives that are lost on the property, I mean, it's the same, the same argument could be made with regards to the Mall of Louisiana, to the interstate, you know, why hasn't the council shut down the Mall of Louisiana? There's been.
That's in Baton Rouge. Do you mean Mall St. Vincent?
I'm sorry, Mall St. Vincent, yes, I just came back from Baton Rouge, I'm sorry. The mall, the mall here in, in Shreveport, I mean, that they're, the same logic applies, that the calls to the mall here far exceed anything that my client's business does. As a former prosecutor, I can't tell you how many crimes that I prosecuted from that area, but you cannot make the causal link to the business itself unless, unless the business itself promotes the activity.
I'm sorry to cut you off again, but maybe I'm not really, um, we've already had our officer here state that in comparison, in the same amount of time to another liquor store in a busy thoroughfare, that there were four calls compared to the 102.
Well, but, but again, I, I would like to see what his breakdown of those calls are because just because you say, "I have 100 calls to this one area," it could be 100 calls because I have an individual loitering versus the four calls at this area that are four armed robberies. I'll take the 100 loitering calls to the four armed robberies any day. You've got to break down to see what are the calls about? Because if it's a minute call, that's one thing. If you have four shootings versus 100 loitering calls that are being initiated by my client, that's a wholly different story. My clients actually making furtive efforts to get the loiterers off his property to do that, but if you have four calls from this area saying, "These are shootings here," that's a problem area. You're comparing apples to oranges at that point. But I'm willing to let the police department say, "Hey, this is the breakdown," and, and see how that shakes out, and if the council per your procedures, I believe under 12H, to, that allows us to brief the issue and allows the police department, which they have the ability to respond with those stats, I'm willing to let that process flush out because I believe it'll flush out in our favor.
Councilwoman. It is on you, and I'm not, I'm not cutting you off, I'm just, while he's bopped that Subject waving a handgun, subject waving a handgun in someone's face, another subject waving handgun, that someone was badly assaulting a black female, choking her badly, remove her from making threats to shoot his customers, drug, person on drugs outside in the, in the parking lot, another person at the back door saying someone had ripped him off, advised he got upset because of the payment, requesting the officer to come out because they're being disordered at Shreveport SPV Council, and was upset due to, due to, due to his pay. Six gunshots outside of the store, pulled off burglar in process, there's a loitering, two loiterings, intoxicated refusing, refusing to leave the store, multiple shots fired, several shots fired in the area, several shots fired again, the male called and advised that there were shots coming from the store, several shots in the area again. that there were shots coming from the store, several shots in the area again, three shots fired, drug activity. And I got two more pages and I've only seen two loitering.
But Councilman Bowman, I want to point out, do those calls break down? Where those calls are actually taking place as far as the shots? Are they across at the actual other business? Because that's the distinction here. That's where it needs to be broken down.
No, this is actually at the store.
The call itself is saying at the store.
It's from the store.
And these are documents, if you have those, we would certainly, we may have to get those in discovery because that's not what we were provided. So to that, our argument remains in place again, that unless you can causally attach that to the business, saying the business owners themselves, for whatever business, somebody said prostitution, if they're holding themselves out to be a red light district, that's inviting that business. If they themselves have been charged with distribution, that's encouraging and linking that criminal activity. But again, that activity happens throughout Shreveport, and the precedent we're setting here is we're going to start linking those calls to businesses throughout town. If we're going to do that, then I think we can rouse citizens to say, we're going to start requesting the Shreveport Police Department to pull the logs of all their calls for every business here in town. And to that extent, every single business that has this same activity, let's start yanking them left and right. If we're going to make that uniform application, I'll sit down right now and I won't say another word if the council wants to commit to that. But if we're not ready to commit to that, then we've got to make that analysis of whether or not there is a causal connection to the criminal activity alleged to my client's actual business and further to the owner of the building's connection. Because again, if this owner was someone living out of state, then he's even more attenuated to the actions that are going on here.
Counselwoman Nicholson.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's my time out.
We're using the board again. Okay, Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you. Well, I want to make sure, Mr. Thompson, that you have an opportunity to look at the documents that I'm looking at before we finish this, because I don't want there to be any confusion about what you saw and what you got an opportunity to comment on. But just to follow on Councilman Bowman's comments, the documents that the police department has provided to us include offense reports and a summary of those offense reports. September 26, 2018, armed robbery, complainant was robbed in the parking lot of Right Way Liquor. March 14 of 18, robbery, citizen was robbed while standing in front of the Right Way Liquor. March 29, 2018, aggravated assault, citizen had a firearm pointed in his face while paying cashier for his merchandise. May 28 of the same year, assault and battery, a fight occurred at Right Way Liquor and a female was knocked unconscious. October 2, 2018, assault and battery, subject arrested for striking someone at Right Way Liquor. October 23, 2019, assault and battery, officer responded to an armed person at Right Way Liquor. The victim advised that he was struck in the head with a gun. September 7 of 19, shooting, citizen advised they were purchasing cigarettes from White Port Right Way Liquor and that her vehicle was damaged from gunfire in the parking lot. November 19 of 19, narcotics arrested, subject at Right Way Liquor for possessing marijuana, methamphetamine, and oxycodone. December 7 of 19, officers observed a vehicle loitering in the parking lot, marijuana along with a handgun possessed by a convicted felon was discovered. September 13 of 19, stolen vehicle, subject was loitering in the parking lot of Right Way Liquor in a stolen vehicle. February 2, 2019, public drunkenness at Right Way Liquor. October 23, 2018, citizen was murdered in front of the entrance, in the front entrance of Right Way Liquor. November 7, 2019, citizen was murdered at Right Way Liquor. And then another one, another assault and battery, apparently from 2017, where a phone was stolen, the citizen was hit with a chair in front of the store. And so I want to, I want to make sure you have those. I don't think there's any dispute that those offense reports were filed. And I just, I will make the comment for the record and for my colleagues that, you know, revoking a liquor license does not require us, of course, to conclude that the owner of the store is personally committing any of these crimes. That's not the standard. We have broad discretion as the city council to regulate liquor licenses, and it seems apparent to me from the extensive information that the police department had, has provided us, that this store is a very serious problem in Councilwoman Taylor's district. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor. Attorney Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, as you talk about the 200-plus signatures, and none of the people are here to speak in support of that, and so how can you say that there was no notice given? And yet you have all of these signatures to keep this store open?
I don't, you're saying that I'm making the-
Yes.
No, that's Mr. Michota's argument.
But into the record, that's what you presented.
That's what I present on behalf of my client.
And I think the other thing too, sir, is that if you literally or you're displaying that he is not bearing any responsibility, then to Councilwoman Fuller's statement, then why do you choose to implement all of these items now? If you sat in a community meeting with the MLK community, at what level of respect do you have for the community there? And when you say that you have given, given what? Given what to the community that we're here to serve? That is a real issue for me. And are these signatures, are they property owners? Do they live here? Do they have a vested interest within the community that's here? All of those things. So even though this situation predates me coming onto the council, I think there was ample opportunity for him to implement all of these things without anything coming to the council if he spoke to the community where he receives his dollars.
Well, I think if the comment is saying that I don't appreciate or I'm deprecating the thoughts and sentiments of the community, that's totally false. Those signatures represent part of the individuals that I'm pushing for in today's proceeding. These are individuals that live in that area that recognize the same arguments we're putting forth, that, again, if the standard we're using is what we're proposing here today and we're going to make this a uniform application, because whether or not we're applied by the rules of evidence like Councilman Nicholson suggested or not, regardless, I think we're still bound by uniformity and consistency with the application of how this council doles out punishment. So to the extent that we can come back to this council and say, I've got 10 other businesses I'm ready to put forth with this same application, the same stats, which we can most definitely do, and to major businesses here in town, are we going to make the same uniform application? Again, if the council's ready to say that, yes, we are, Mr. Thompson, and bring your applications next week, again, I won't say another word about this process. I don't think we're there yet. And to the extent that I have over 250, I think we have 270 signatures by count of individuals who live in that community, and whether you say they're homeowners or they rent or what do they, they're still citizens of that community and their input is just as valuable. I don't care if they're homeowners or they rent there, or they're struggling to make ends meet, or they're well off, they're still citizens with rights to have an individual come before the council with their signatures for the same, in the same method that Ms. Rogers did, the same method as the other individuals that gave public comment to come forth and say, as our mouthpiece during this COVID crisis where we don't necessarily want to be in a packed council room, but as our mouthpiece, as our attorney, you know, in a roundabout way through your client here to represent, that we don't attribute that directly to his actions and to say, we're going to vacate that business and in effect, put a vacant building there, which I can tell you attracts crime more than any viable business can do. And then to have it, to say, well, then all we're doing is just going to have the crime rove from his parking lot to another parking lot. It's not going to go away. And so to that extent, all we're doing is creating a vacant building and we're taking away a business out of that community. So that is our position on the desires and the opinions of the individuals in that community. They're reflected by those signatures.
They're reflected by the citizens' opinions that you say that aren't here or that haven't even written in to even speak in support of his business.
But regardless, unless we're saying those individuals don't count-
I'm not saying that those individuals don't count, and it's not for me to be based upon the socioeconomic level of those individuals. Not at all.
But to say that they're not here-
But I'm just, but what I am saying is, you have 200-plus signatures that you've brought forth here. There were 127-plus signatures that were brought forth in March, if I'm not mistaken. What was the time period that we have these particular signatures? And again, I go back to what Councilwoman Fuller said, why weren't these things already implemented? If you had 100-plus service calls, service calls are service calls, as it relates to that store, do you honestly sit here and tell me that this individual that has this store, let me finish, that this individual that has this store does not see that there is a need or a problem of concern? You selling alcohol to minors is a concern, especially when we talk about Mothers Against Drunk Driving. When we talk about all of those and that you give to a school, but you don't check the IDs that you say that you give to Green Oaks High School? Come on.
Can't-
What I'm saying, what I'm saying again, Mr. Thompson, honestly, they've had ample time, ample time, ample time to correct this.
And if I may respond to the citations, I believe if you pull every business here in town from the ABC records, every single one of them has been cited for selling to underage individuals. It happens in a volume process business of any restaurant or liquor establishment here in town, that happens. Okay? And then when you go to court, you know, the facts come out as far as, do they have a fake license? What happened in the case that led to that? That's why dispositions are so important in my world, of course, and should be in the real-world application is, what was the ultimate justice on that? So to the extent that they were charged versus never convicted is my argument for you on that issue. And again, there's nothing about these calls that can't be found and attributed to other businesses that I'm not prepared to say it's that business's fault. If you pull another business here in Shreveport that has the same statistics, again, unless that business owner is saying or doing something that invites that activity, then I'm not prepared to say we're going to punish every single business owner where a bad incident occurs. There's plenty of businesses throughout this area that have had horrible things happen. And again, as a prosecutor for 15 years, I could bore this council for hour with war stories on murders that have happened here and there, armed robberies, rapes, everything in this town, but you cannot attribute that to the business owners. And more importantly, you can't attribute that to the owners of the building. That would never hold up in a court of law. You're not going to have that connection there. And it's a, it's a feel-good emotional level to say, we're going to do this, but the end result does not, does not measure with regards to, did we actually do the right thing here or did we actually create a vacant building that's going to invite more crime and just move any individual that wants to do the criminal element to another spot versus giving this individual a punishment? Because we're not sitting here saying, we're here to walk out of here without any punishment. What we're asking for is a probationary period to say, let him put these measures in place. Let's see if it, if it doesn't work, if there's still calls for services, if the surveillance systems don't thwart crime, if the security guard doesn't thwart it, then take it away. We have nothing left to argue. But to that extent, I am respectfully offering that there is a compromise that could be in place here that does not set a precedent of punishing business owners and the owner of the buildings of things that they don't have any control over.
What about punishing the community?
Ma'am.
What about punishing the community?
Well, to that extent, again, if we use this standard, then business owners are about to be punished. And again, if you're saying, we're going to take this business, you're punishing the individuals that signed that petition saying, we want this business because we don't want that vacant building. We don't attribute that to this gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Okay.
If you, would you yield?
Sure.
Appreciate it. You could have preempted your appeal to us right now to perleniency in order to enact these measures by taking it upon yourself to do those measures prior to today.
Well, the thing we did, and if it's the fault of how we approached-
I want to say one more thing, though, before I-
Okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Tread carefully on insinuating that the community has so much crime that it'll be inconsequential if you actually close this, that the crime will continue.
Exactly.
Because that is a slap in the face to this entire community.
Because it's the lowest crime rate in the city.
It's, I'm not saying that as part of, what I'm saying is, is that there's crime everywhere in the city. There's crime everywhere, and there's always going to be-
I said what I said.
Right, but I'm not insinuating, I think that's taken out of context of what I said. That's not what I said. What I'm saying is there's crime everywhere and to the extent that you're always going to have a criminal element anywhere, anywhere, you pick a spot and say, you're always going to have individuals that want to commit crimes. And so to that extent, and again, you can pick a place, my argument applies anywhere. To that extent, that individual, if you've got cameras here, if you got, I mean, I'll apply it to bank robbers. If you got surveillance system at one bank and none at another, then it's just going to move the crime to another spot, the individuals that want to commit crime. So there's no insinuation on that end of a mall or anything towards the district itself. It's towards the criminal element that exists in our entire city.
Councilman Butcher.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chairman, I should say. There's something that just really kind of bothers me about this, Mr. Thompson, and I got a couple, a couple of questions. So since 2017, there's been 102 incidents at this particular location. The presentation that we were given by the police department only has calls in it up to 2019, to December of 2019. Is that correct, Mr. Bradley?
We just had the radio room give us everything from February to June.
And how many calls, how many calls have there been? This is February of 2020 to June.
Thank you, okay.
So 17 calls. I guess that the problem that I have is, January, the owner of the business was notified that this proceeding was going to be going on. And I have to agree with Councilwoman Fuller and Councilwoman Taylor, that if I knew that my business was under this type of scrutiny and to say, considering we had two murders there last year, I would have already implemented what's being proposed.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think I erroneously spoke. They have put up lights and security measures at the business. So I can probably let him, or if I could, Mr. Michota's client probably has the more accurate information on what was done on that. So I do apologize on that, miss, I didn't provide that information.
Moreover, that obviously has not done the trick, because 17 since February to, you know, and I mean, some of these, the offenses all look like, from the reports that Councilman Nicholson read, a lot of them have to do with the business. And I'm concerned too about Mr. Bradley saying that, that your client is also operating other liquor stores in the city without a permit to operate. I don't mind, I don't mind hearing from him, but that is, that is an issue to me. It almost sets a precedence of lawlessness that's going on by the business owner, but also at the business itself. And now, I will say this, on the other hand, the owner of the property, I feel a little bit different about, and we'll get to that when Mr. Michota speaks.
Sure.
But as far as the owner of the liquor store, I mean, I just can't imagine, it'd be almost like my house being robbed every day and me not taking the initiative to go get an alarm system, cameras, and if it came down to it and my family needed protected, I'd hire a guard if I couldn't move. So that's kind of where I'm at with all of this. I just, I can't understand why, being under such scrutiny that we knew of, at least until Jan, January that he knew of, why we've not done something to combat what's happened? Because as a councilman, I can't sit here under the management of that, of the owner at this point and say, okay, well, we're going to give you a suspension for X amount of time, but then we're going to give you a trial, and then we have two or three more murders. That's going to be on my head. And I just don't know, I don't know if I can do that. So, thank you.
And to clarify, Councilman, my client has indicated that after the first incident, that that's when the extra cameras, the extra lights came up, things of that nature. So he has implemented what he can do to make the area safer and is willing to do more at the recommendations of either the council, Shreveport Police Department, any security expert that wants to chime in on this, we're- We're, we're making ourselves available to do so.
What about, what about the operating without a license in the other locations?
But I, I, he, I can let him address that to the council. I, this is first I'm hearing of that, so I don't, without seeing the evidence, the information, the charge itself, I'm not in a position to answer that.
I don't mind. I mean, if the council didn't mind, I don't care.
Hassan Awad, seventeen fifty Martin Luther King. Sir, um, for that license, I had applied for seventy in Jewella. I had got my ATC license from the state. Now, we were waiting for the state license to come in. I, when we got the state license, I thought we were okay to serve alcohol. Now, the city license is what we were waiting on. And when the gentlemen's came in, they said, where's your license? I said, here you go, sir, here's the ATC license, which is the state license. He said, where's the city license? I said, I applied for it and I'm, I'm waiting for it. The gentleman said, it's on my desk. Uh, but why are you selling alcohol? I said, I'm selling alcohol because I have the state license. See, when I took over Right Way, I just took over, it was, it was a different paperwork. Usually my, um, bookkeeper, bookkeeper does all the paperwork, and I didn't know that I had to wait for this, this permit to come in. So that's what happened. And then the gentleman said, you have to, you can't serve alcohol until the city serves, that brings you the license. I said, okay, and I stopped selling alcohol from that day. Seven months now with no, with no license, waiting for the city to give me the license. But I had the state license from day one. And that's, that was what was going on in that situation. Now, the other location, I, it never went through. The eighty-eight, eighty-eight, eighty-eight hundred Jewella, me and, and the owner did not, the deal never went through. So I, I, I never went, I never worked.
So you never served alcohol?
I never served alcohol, I never took over that, that business. And, and I'm still waiting for this day to get the state license, or the city license, I'm sorry, for that location.
For the one at Jewella and Seventy?
Yes, sir.
My, my interjective question.
When I got the ATC license, the state license, that's where I thought that I can go ahead and, and serve. So I knew from the gentleman that day when he came in that I have to wait for the city license. He said, it's on my desk. Once you get it, you can serve alcohol. So that's where I stopped, and I never sold one-
Uh, one, one question.
No alcohol at all.
It's concerning to me that, that you didn't realize you had to have a city license. What about, there's several, uh, reports of drunk people on the property. There are several reports of drinking on the premises. There's all these different reports in here.
Which location are we talking about?
I'm talking about your, your, the business in question. So if, the, the one on MLK, the business in question that we're talking about.
The MLK, yes.
Right, there's, there's several reports of that. So it makes me kinda wonder if maybe you have a lack of understanding of the liquor-
I was advised, I was advised from the poli-, uh, from the, uh, the gentlemen's that work in the police station to make phone calls every time they have, he told me not to go out and say, tell the customer anything, just call us. And if, if there was a noise, you know, like, uh, music or, or anybody drinking alcohol. So I was, I, I, they told me that I have to help them, you know, uh, with no, having no trouble around the, the, the location. So that's where I started calling. I started calling a lot of phone calls just if I saw anybody putting music or, 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 you know, trying not to leave. I, I would let the customer, if he buys his stuff and he stayed like three minutes just sitting in, around the property, I would tell him, sir, please leave. If he didn't leave, I would call the-
Okay, you, you, that's, that's-
So I was trying to-
That's the question I was asking.
Yes, sir. I was advised from them to, to make these phone calls. That's why I started making these extra phone calls after the incident happened.
The, the point of the question is, I wanna make sure that you have an understanding of the liquor license because it doesn't appear to be-
Yes, I do.
From what's been going on in MLK, and then what also has gone on at the other locations. So I yield to Councilman Nicholson, thank you.
Sir, tell me again when you were first advised by the police department that you needed a city license for the location at Jewella and Seventy?
Yes, sir.
When, when, when did you receive that notice?
Well, they came in that day to give me a, a ticket. I don't know the date, but that was like-
Well, I, I know they gave you, when did you first receive notice or understand that you needed a city license?
Maybe the third day that I took over the, the state license.
When was that? What, what day?
Seven months ago.
Seven months ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Corporal, has he sold alcohol at that location since that time?
Um, the first time vice unit went in, um, this was back in January twenty-third. Had a convicted felon serving alcohol. He was a convicted felon in possession of a firearm, no ABO card, selling alcohol at the location.
That went, at the location where he didn't have a license at all?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the first day, yes.
That's when I responded, a month later, in February.
Okay.
He had a state license, and on that state license, it states, this is not valid until you have a city permit or a city license. Also, when I did talk to him at that time, they had already been selling alcohol since the vice unit had already went in there.
We had stopped after-
Yeah, sir, I, I have to say that, I mean, for me, the fact that you sold alcohol at a location without a license issued by this city-
No, I had this-
And it is, is, I mean, that's alone sufficient, from my perspective, to, uh, discontinue your selling alcohol in the city. I, I just-
I had a state license.
I, I understand.
I had the state license.
Councilman Bowman?
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm listening at, uh, Councilman Nicholson, and I have to go back on that. You said you did not know that you had to have a city permit until when?
You know, I understand that I have to have a city permit, but I thought, you, you know, you get your state license, and then your city license comes in the, in the mail. And I asked the gentleman, uh, when the gentleman came in, he said, your state, that city license is coming in, you have to stop selling alcohol right now until it comes in. I was like, yes, sir. And from that day, I never sold alcohol. And that's more than seven months ago.
I guess I'm, I, I guess what's confusing to some up here that you, you applied for the city license, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I did.
You applied for it.
The city license was-
So at that point, when you applied, you knew that you need to have them to serve, is what I'm, I think is what I'm getting from some of my colleagues up here.
Well, yeah, but when the ATC license came in, the li-, the state license, that's when I, you know, that's when I thought that I can serve.
Okay. So the ABO card for the employee who happened to be a felon who happened to have-
The ABO card, that was his first day there, and I didn't ever knew that he was a felon.
So we didn't check?
And he went the second day and he got a ABO card, and then he doesn't work for me after that.
Okay. I think, uh, let me say this. I, I've only remember maybe one other incident other than the one I had in my district. And that was, it's the citizens, uh, first, let me say that. So most of the citizens called the, in the incidents that I had, at the store that I had, the, the same troubles that you had. And the same that I'm looking at here, that the citizens are the ones that are calling most of these, and you called them when it was an inconvenience to you. And that's, that, that bothers me. I don't know if it affects anyone else, but it bothers me that the citizens are the ones that are making these calls and not the actual store management, the store owner. That's what gets me. If something was to happen at my place, me or someone in charge needs to do the calling, not the, not the actual citizens. I appreciate the citizens calling, but it needs to come from the, the person in charge of the store.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, but, uh, I have a, my, my, ninety-five percent of my business is through a window. It's a drive-through.
I understand.
It happened, what, a lot of things happens-
That you can't-
I couldn't, I don't even see, and I don't even realize until the officer comes.
Okay. And I think that's why they're asking that in the past, and I know Ms. Rogers has come, and that's not even my district, but Ms. Rogers has come to me several times asking about, well, that, that they have tried to engage you all in getting these type of security measures or something.
No, I had cameras.
But the cameras didn't come until way after, I mean, these cameras recently happened. That didn't just happen, uh, uh, that didn't happen two, two years ago, or a year ago, six months ago. These cap, these cameras recently came.
No, no, what I was trying to say is, we had, uh, cameras, but I was, what I was trying to say is, uh, bring extra security, like, uh, 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 security company. That's what I'm trying to say, if we can add more. But, uh, uh, we, we did a lot of, we fixed a lot of stuff in the store. Um, and, 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 and we brought cameras, and we brought more lightings se- since that, that incident happened.
Okay, Councilman Tyler.
Sir.
Councilman.
I'm sorry.
Don't go in green.
I'll yield to her, go ahead.
Sir.
I yield to her, go ahead.
How long have you been in business?
How long have I, have I been? Three years now, ma'am.
At the Right Way?
The Right Way Liquor, ma'am.
When did you install the cameras?
There was cameras from day one, but when we, uh, we did, uh, we, uh, we remodeled, we, we did a remodeling in the sto- the store, and the, the cameras before used to be one of those old cameras. And, uh, that's when we remodeled this, uh, we, we put more cameras after we remodeled the store. Now, this, the cameras are good cameras now, and we, we, we put more lighting. But what I was trying to tell everybody that if we can bring more, you know, a security, a security company outside.
When were the cameras operable?
The cameras?
When were the cameras operable? You say you've been, you've been in the-
From day one, the cameras are working.
So you have security cameras already in the store?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have them outside the store?
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's the security measure that you have? At any point in time when the police have come and they've had any situations, have you provided them video information?
Yes, ma'am, but the first, the first incident, I, I, as I recall, we were under, uh, remodeling. That's where we didn't have, our, our cameras weren't all working.
How long did it take you to remodel?
Um, months it took us, it took us months to remodel. Because we were doing another building next to the old building.
Councilman Green?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Thompson, you said that, that building, I mean, that liquor store, that you got them all over town. We had, I don't know the name, I can't remember the name of his company, but some months ago, Mr. Bernie Woods on liquor store at the corner of, uh, Lakeshore and Hearn. And we drilled him, and he has zero citations. Has zero complete, zero citations. When you talk about the mall, the mall is not selling, um, alcohol. The mall was an incident that started someplace else that ended up at Dillitz, if that's the one you're talking about. And I don't think it's fair to put Dillitz Store in with a liquor store. I don't think that's fair. And I don't think that it's fair to talk about crime all over the city when we're talking about crime in one specific location. I think that's unfair. And then you have, since you want us to search ourselves, search yourself and ask yourself, if you live two blocks from that, if you lived in Martin King, would you be up here as an attorney for them with the whole community saying, this need to go? Or would you be an advocate to say this need to say? If it was your neighborhood, if in fact it was? And then when you say about the cameras, sir, those cameras, when, uh, all of the activities that have been going on, have the police department used your tapes to find out who did what?
Well, we gave them-
Have they used, have they used your footage on, on the cameras?
Yes, who they, yes, they did. They, they came in, like, five, six officers, and they took the DVD thing for three days, the, the, the police station.
For which incident?
The second incident.
Which one was that?
The Mr. Cortez incident.
Okay. They used it for the second one? What about for the first one?
The first one, sir, the building was under, under, uh, under construction.
So with all of the crime going on in your neighborhood, you allowed your camera system to go dead until the remodel?
Sir, I didn't have that kinda, we didn't have no cr- that kinda crimes. I, I mean, I were, I've been in-
And I'm just asking.
I've been in, I've been in Right Way Liquor for three years. I love my customers, my customers love me. A lot of people that are standing against me, they don't even know me. They ne- never even shopped at Right Way Liquor.
Well, let me ask you that. I don't think they're standing against you. I just think that it's all of the violence that's going. Where do you live? What part of town you live in?
I live, uh, on your, next to your, uh, close to Yuri Drive. But sir, yes, sir.
So how much crime is over there?
I'm, I'm-
I'm just saying.
I'm working all day in my, I, I spend mo- most of my time on the Cooper.
So, so since you spend most of your time on the Cooper, why haven't you bought a house there? So that you would have a shorter distance to drive?
I would love to buy a house there.
You don't have any?
I, 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 I would love to buy a house there.
I got a lot of kid folk up there, so I can get you a house.
I have a lot of friends on the Cooper.
I can get you a ha- I can get you a house up there tomorrow.
I go to a lot of parties in the Cooper.
I'm just saying, I can get you a house there tomorrow.
We barbecue together.
This is what I'm saying.
Yes.
So that you could cut down on driving from the Cooper Road to Yuri, since you spend all of your time there. I can get you a house there before the week out.
Councilman, but I, I'm, I'm a little jacked there. That's, that's good for my client, I mean-
Sir, you've talked about stuff that had nothing to do with rights in Russia, so if this has nothing to do with rights in Russia, just let me finish, just like, I didn't interrupt you at all, I listened to every argument that you said. Everything you said, I just sit here, I never said anything about whatever, did I, Mr. Thompson?
Oh, no, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm in a present and job.
So how are you going to, now that I'm talking to your cli- you want to ask him to come up here?
Oh, yes, sir.
I mean, you invited him to come. So you have to advise your couns-, your, your client as to whether he need to speak or not? Because I just, I, I listen and I listen. I, I plan not to say nothing because I just had planned not to say. But when it gets so deep, it just get too deep, and I just, I mean, it just go way off. I mean, I live in a community like what they're talking about on the Cooper. So I understand possibly, and I don't know if you live on the Cooper Road or not, but I don't know what your neighborhood is. But I live in a neighborhood just like that. And I wish that I could have a night without violence, without shooting, without whatever. But I would like to invite either one of you, not to stay on Cooper Road, but come live in my neighborhood for a day, and you'll understand what those folk are saying. Those hundred and twenty-six that you're talking about? If you come stay with me one night, I guarantee you, both of you couldn't wait until morning to leave. So all I'm saying is that, it's like, I mean, if you're right, you're right. If you're wrong, you're wrong. If you're right, then we're gonna do due process. If you're wrong, just go on and accept it and say, okay, this one y'all got me. But from this day forward, I'm gonna fix it. So don't fix the blame, fix the problem. Because so many times in life, we always blaming somebody else. We blame whoever. But let's start fixing the problem and not fixing the blame. If you got caught, you just got caught. And so, I mean, I understand, you know, you're gonna make a lot of money, whatever, but no, that's, that's your bid, that's good. But you got another couns-, uh, councilman up here who's, who's I, who's my lawyer. But you got another couns- uh councilman up here who's who's I, who's my lawyer, I I keep him on retain right now. He's on retain, so so if I say something out of line, then he's gonna kick me over here and I'm gonna be quiet. But I mean, if you get caught, you just get caught, so don't say, we gonna punish y'all, cause we didn't do any of that. So now y'all gonna go out saying, the council is finna punish us and we finna do this? What about all those innocent folk up there that just want some peace? Just one night of peace?
I'm ready to, I'm ready to fix anything you want.
So that, so when you say we're ready to fix it, that means that we can go on and do this year and then by the time that this year's up, then you'll go to some courses and you'll know how to operate a business? You could call Mr. Bernie Woods and some of those other folk and they'll tell you how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
Colleagues, anything else?
I just wanted to, what what do your recom- I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, what are your recommendations again?
Uh Councilman Bowman, what I'm respectfully asking all the council members to consider is that there's other compromises that could be made here that do not endanger the citizens as is Councilman Boucher's concern, which I I readily share too. No- nobody wants that in this situation. Well, we're respectfully suggesting is, if the council wants to impose a suspension period on my client's business, that he's he's willing and ready to accept that. To that, to the extent that we are respectfully asking consideration that the suspension period not be for an entire year, that during the interim period that he's suspended, either there's a suspension period where he's not operating in business and then there's a suspension period where he's on an interim basis or probationary basis, where he can implement these measures that we discussed here today. Security cameras, uh for one, additional lighting, two, a security guard, a full-time security guard, three. Uh four, to reduce his hours of operation, so we're not into the AM hours, which I feel is a prime activity time for crime anywhere in the city. So to that extent, he would reduce his hours therein. In any other measures that the council or the Shreveport Police Department or any other individual that wants to put, you know, a term and condition in, we're we're availing ourselves to do so in lieu of having this business shut down forever for good. And by extrapolation, having the owner of the building lose his license. That's our kinda secondary measure that we join in with Mr. Machota, so as to not punish the owner himself as well.
What's the, what's the hours of operation now?
What are your hours?
Uh we open from ten to uh uh ten to two.
It's ten AM to two o'clock AM. I think we could drastically reduce the PM hours. And any suggestion that the council would be willing to give, we would certainly abide. So I guess what I'm respectfully asking is akin to a probationary period. And again, if he fails during that probationary period, he fails. But to offer up a suspension, a fine, a probationary period to ma- to institute these measures and to see if that solves the goal of keeping a business in the area that's safe for the citizens while not revoking the license.
All right. That's what I need to know.
Anything else, colleagues?
Just want to know from Bradley, what's their recommendation from this?
Corporal Bradley? Chief?
Madam Chair, ma'am.
Councilman Nicholson?
Uh Chief, before you make your remarks, I just wanna refer to your March third, twenty twenty letter. Uh in that letter, you indicated to council members that during the last two years, beginning twenty eighteen to the end of nineteen, the business that we're talking about today has been one of the most dangerous places in the city. And uh you talked about open-air drug sales, uh two homicides, more than a hundred service calls, which we've discussed. Uh and in the letter, you requested revocation of the alcohol permit for the liquor store and you further requested that that sales be suspended from the property for a period of one year. Uh both the city attorney and the mayor's office approved that letter. And so I uh, nothing I've heard here today would cause me to suspect that you're going to offer a different recommendation. But of course, I'd welcome whatever comments you care to make.
And I think I'll start off by saying that uh the language drafted in that letter is somewhat of a typical language when we do a alcohol revocation permit. Uh but what I would direct the council to, which I think is key, is section ten one thirty-six, which discusses the basis for determination by council to suspend or revoke permit. And before I read it, I think Corporal Bradley did a really good job of of painting the picture of what types of calls and the number of calls and instances the police department has responded to this business. And I think that the ABO office has formulated an opinion of sorts as to um the seriousness of those calls. From the chief of police position, I feel more comfortable placing in the council hands. And uh to summarize, section ten one thirty-six, in determining cases involving suspension or revocation of permits, the council, if the council finds a violation of, is of minor nature or if there are extenuating circumstances, or there are reasonable grounds to expect a permit holder will not again violate provisions of the chapter, the council may enforce a fine or suspend the permit for any such time as it thinks proper, not to exceed three hundred sixty-five days. If the permit holder has previously been fined, et cetera, et cetera, or if the violation is flagrant or serious, or in the case of multiple violations in a three hundred sixty-five day period, the city council may revoke the permit. And so I think the position the police department is gonna be that we provided factual evidence as to the nature of calls, the number of calls within an eighteen-month period, and then more specifically discuss some of them. And I think it's it's uh the council's decision as to how to um invoke that provision. And the position the police department is that we'll enforce whatever ordinances or suspensions, revocations the council sees fit.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, uh Mr. Chair. Chief, I I'd just like to say, I know everybody in this city is on your back, on your department about crime. And I couldn't, I can't with good conscience go against you all when it deals with something like this. I just, in good conscience, with all of the people that's crying out. And in my district, my district is just unbelievable with crime. Little babies getting shot, just everything, two-year-olds. We've talked about it and you've done Operation Red in my district and throughout the whole city. So this letter here to me is magnitude as to what's going on in our city, as to how the citizens is just crying out for help, just some relief anywhere. I mean, any night or any day, they're just crying out for relief. And you and I have talked, you had operations in my district and I appreciate it. And it just seems as though every time one operation starts and it ends, something else just happened. So I have to support what you all said in this letter. I I just, I just have to. I can't say, well, I tell you what, the police department, maybe they don't understand this and let's do part of it. I I can't, I can't go against y'all. And I appreciate you all. I pray for you all day and night, that you all stay safe. And I know that you all under a lot of stress and strain. People wouldn't even imagine to understand what you all go through, so I'm with you all one hundred percent. I also feel sorry for the business owner, the landowner, whatever, that they're gonna miss some money and whatever. I really, my heart go out to them. But as far as crime in this city, if we don't start somewhere doing something, we are gonna be in serious trouble. It's on the Cooper Road, it's in my district, it's wherever, it's gonna be all over the whole city and everybody's gonna be crying out. So I have to support what you all said in that letter.
Yes.
Yes.
And I just, just to add on to that, I I push real hard for uh alcohol sales and for the hours of operations to be extended. That was, I was solely looking at um revenue for the city and for business owners to uh do well with their business. But when it it, when it has compromised public safety, then at that point, then I have some kind of a a good issue with that and that's what I'm here for. So um I just want to add, I just want to go into the record and say that that I I pushed for that and I and and I did. But not for it to be a harm to anyone, um not one citizen, nowhere. Councilwoman Foley?
Councilman Green?
We're done.
We're done.
Y'all good? Anyone else have anything? So now it's time to move on to Mr. Machota and his client. Thank you, Chief, thank you Corporal.
Good afternoon again, Ron Machota, six-two-eight Stoner, Shreveport. Um I'm not gonna belabor this point, but again, I'm going to point out, number one, uh in the notice that was sent, there's no claims that my client, Mr. Mike Hassan, violated any rule, any law, never charged. I asked Corporal Bradley to make sure before I made a statement, had Mr. Hassan violated any law to his knowledge? He said, no. It is penalizing the landowner for something that he has nothing to do with. We're separate and distinct. That's why there are two lawyers here. Because Mr. Thompson can't advocate for the landowner and that's why we have two lawyers trying to differentiate between the two issues. I'm asking that it not be taken up as far as suspending the alcohol use for a year because of constitutional issues, due process issues, due process issues. And for those reasons, I I also spoke to Mr. Chief Raymond earlier today and I asked him about his February nineteenth, twenty twenty letter. And he had indicated to me that he wishes that he had not put that last paragraph in there because it's y'all's duty to make decisions and not him. All he can do is investigate. So this was a form letter that's been used for years and years and he prepared the letter off of a form and sent it in. My issue is totally different from Mr. Thompson's client's issue and we think it's draconian to prevent him from leasing his property as a liquor store because that's exactly what it is. Thank you.
Colleagues?
Mr. Machota?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
What what is, what is the relationship between the owner of the liquor store and the owner of the property?
You talking about uh family relationship?
They're they're not related or anything like that?
No, sir.
Is that, okay. They're, they have no other businesses together or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay.
So not at any time Attorney Machota was the owner even concerned about what was happening at Right Way Liquor? He didn't know anything that was going on in the last two years?
As I indicated to you earlier, when I spoke to you on the phone this week or last week, uh I indicated to you that we attempted to displace Mr. Thompson's client and he did not want to leave. He's got a written lease and we have to follow the lease. And there's been no eviction process. And then as I indicated to you earlier, when I did speak with you, from March one to July fifte- I'm sorry, June fifteenth, during COVID, you couldn't evict anyone. The the governor had signed a, an order saying you couldn't go to court. So there was no way we could evict him during that period of time and he refused to leave.
He refused to leave at what point?
When we asked him to leave.
When was that?
In March.
Before the mandate?
Before the what?
Before the mandate.
No, the mandate went in fact on March one. When we, when we got the notice about in February of twenty twenty, we talked to him about leaving the premises. That's February nineteenth, twenty twenty. March one, twenty twenty, the mandate went into place and under the CARES Act, you couldn't evict anyone.
At what time before did the owner make contact with Mr. Hassan to say he wanted him off his premises?
When I was notified of this request by the chief of police, my recommendations, even though I'm attorney-client recommendations and privilege, I indicated to him that I believe this gentleman needed to be evicted.
Before him retaining you, did he ask that individual, that tenant, to leave that property?
That I can't tell you. I wasn't his lawyer at that time.
No other preparations that he would make even after the lifting and going into phase two? The owner?
No, ma'am, but we didn't know even about the hearing that was scheduled two weeks ago. Uh for some reason, it got locked in Mr. Thompson's computer and 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 we found out it, like I said earlier, uh by a phone call.
And if he's allowed to keep that address, what does he plan to do with the business?
Lease it out for its primary use.
For?
It's a liquor store.
For liquor store?
Yes, ma'am, there's no, there's no doubt about it, it's built for that. That's why there's a drive-in window.
Thank you, sir.
No other use. Thank you.
In writing this letter on March third, the last paragraph of this letter, do you have it in front of you?
Do I have any what? I'm sorry.
In front of you.
The one dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty?
No, the one dated March third.
I believe the copy I have in front of me is the same letter, yes, ma'am.
Can you read the last paragraph?
I hereby respectfully request the revocation of the alcohol permit for the Right Way Liquor Store. In addition, I'm requesting that provisions of City Ordinance ten dash one oh three subsection B be utilized and all alcohol sales are suspended for a period of one year.
Is this no longer your recommendation?
I'm not gonna say it's not my recommendation, but I think that in future, I will not make a recommendation. I'll just uh orient council members to the policy, which was ten one thirty-six and that it's the council's decision as to the egregiousness of the offenses.
Attorney Machota, how long, when did the lease for this building go into play? Were they effective?
I wasn't his lawyer then, so I would assume two thousand seventeen from what uh he told you that he opened that business at Right Way. But I would assume it's a five-year lease with a five-year option, but I don't know that.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Nicholson?
I'll just make the comment that to my understanding, suspending sales of alcohol from this location does not require a finding by the council that the owner of the property was personally responsible for uh the events that precipitate the suspension. I mean, I I appreciate that that is an additional measure that we can take as a council to protect the public from a situation where we, you know, suspend one problem owner and then another is quickly substituted in its place with the same operation. So um I'm inclined to support the recommendation that Chief Raymond made back in March of twenty twenty and and I'll I'll say he made that recommendation unequivocally uh in uh in in a well-supported manner. Uh but but in casting a vote in favor of those remedies, uh I I'm not finding that the owner of the property did anything wrong and I don't think that finding is necessary for us to take the requested action. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As the council representative for District A, let me say that I don't not only represent the citizens of this district, I'm a product of this district. So I am fully vested in this community and I know what I have seen and what I have heard here and what I have received from my constituents is alarming. I have the greatest respect for both of you, Attorney Machota and Attorney Thompson. I really do, because I realize that you act on behalf of your clients, which is duly noted. But I, as a councilwoman, act on behalf of my constituents. This store has brought a series of violent tendencies, of disruption into the MLK community. And so it is my recommendation and I ask my council colleagues to move forward with the revocation of this license and to also suspend the nine eleven address for twelve months.
Is there a motion?
There was a motion from Councilwoman Taylor, a second from Councilman Green. Is there any discussion? Then I call for the vote.
Foley? Correct, Councilman, I got you right. I heard you correctly, right? Foley, with the whole? No doubts, no?
Councilman Fleury?
I I didn't, I couldn't hear it, but what are we voting?
The motion from Councilwoman Taylor-
I heard speaking, but I couldn't.
The the motion is to revoke the license and suspend the use for the location for twelve months.
Aye, aye.
Ca- Council? Chairman?
Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
I have a, I agree 100% with suspending or revoking the license of the current owner of the business, but I'm having a lot of trouble with the landowner part because I just don't know kind of what, and I'm assuming that's what you were saying, right? Councilman Nicholson.
Well, what I intended to say was that I do not think that our suspending use of the property for alcohol sales for a year requires a finding that the owner of the land did anything wrong. I'm inclined to support and will vote in favor of Councilwoman Taylor's motion, which imposes both penalties.
Okay. My understand, my understand this will be done on a separate basis. If that's the way it's got to be, then I guess I'll have to go with y'all because I agree. But I do have some question in my mind about the, about the property owner, but if this is the motion that's on the floor, I will not offer a substitute motion.
Okay. Well.
It passes unanimously. All right.
Councilwoman Fuller, for purposes of the record, I believe Mr. Bradley may have provided Mr. Thompson with the police booklet.
He did. I'll acknowledge your seat.
I want to make sure that Mr. Michauda is also provided with a copy of the booklet.
Thank you.
And Mr. Michauda, and Mr. Michauda provided the motion to allow suspension of the alcohol sales and the attachment, which is Danielle Ewing's correspondence of August 17, 2020, as well as Chief Raymond's letter of March 3, 2020, as well as violations for revocation, as well as alcoholic beverage hearings, and that's all attached to Mr. Michauda's motion. So I want to make sure that's in the record.
Madam Chair.
And I also, I would also suggest, I would also suggest that we obtain, because we may need it in the future, a copy of the lease between the owner and the tenant, because there may be an issue later on, how long the lease lasts, et cetera.
Thank you, Attorney Luthier.
And Madam Chair, if I may, just to perfect, to perfect the record, just respectfully note the council's objection, and this is just for perfection of record purposes in the event of appeal, just to note the objection and our intent to appeal to the district court if that's required in our application, so that if that could be noted for the record.
Thank you.
And also, for personal comment, sometimes in these heated debates and discussions that in our advocacy, we may come across as saying something that we do not mean it to be offensive. And if I, if I said something to the effect that the council chair or anybody else took offense, I'm very sorry. I apologize.
And for purposes of the record, I've been practicing law with these gentlemen, and they practice the right way. So we're going to fight, but we're going to fight fast.
Yes. Let me, let me just chime in on that. I count Mr. Thompson and Mr. Michauda as personal friends and colleagues in the bar. They're both exceptional lawyers, and they did a fine job for their clients.
I agree.
Councilman Bowman and Councilman Green?
I just want to say, hey, Ron, you know I love you. I really appreciate you, and this has nothing to do with Rice and Rush, and thank you for representing them like you've represented me in the past, man.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Hassan, I'm giving our notice of appeal. Thank you.
Just for clarification for members of that community and for us here, when does this go into effect?
I have to send them written notice of the decision, which our office can do tomorrow.
Okay. May I respectfully inquire of the city attorney or the council itself? Because when we were studying the issue, and I believe it's 10-138 and 10-139 that provides the appeal process, and there's reference that upon a final judgment that it becomes enforceable, but then there's some ambiguity in the language with regards to a devolutive appeal versus a trial de novo in the district court, which I would respectfully argue, and maybe Mr. LaTeire and I may have this argument for another day, that it's not a final judgment until the appeals are exhausted. And so to that effect, we would respectfully ask that enforcement do not take place until a, until the appeals process has been exhausted. And I would defer to Mr. LaTeire if that's his appreciation of the.
I have to look at it, but I would think you may have to file a motion to stay.
You have to, yeah. That's exactly what we did in my case, and that's what, yeah.
Okay.
And trust me, it wasn't heated today. I promise you. That wasn't heated at all.
Again, and especially, again, the councilman, Councilwoman Taylor, the same courtesy and respect to you as well. Thank you.
Mayor Perkins withdrew the civil service appointment. Do we need to take any other action on that?
You will need to take action to withdraw that at the administration's request.
So we're picking up there. I'll entertain a motion to withdraw.
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Butcher, a second from Councilman Green. Off of the vote. No items under consent agenda? We're ready? Councilman Butcher, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry, Chairman Flurry?
Yes.
We are, we entertain a motion from Councilman Butcher and a second from Councilman Green to withdraw Ms. Norris from civil service appointment consideration.
Yes. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Ms. Ewing, please proceed to regular agenda legislation.
Resolution 105, amending and restating Resolution 90 of 2020, making application to Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of the incurring of debt and issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, of not to exceed $35 million revenue bond, Series 2020.
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I won't belabor the points I made two weeks ago, but for the reasons we've discussed, I encourage my colleagues to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I call for the vote. Councilman Flurry, this is a resolution?
No.
Okay. It's a no from Chairman Flurry. And it's four no, three yes, the motion fails. Let's continue.
Resolution 112, a resolution for the certification of compliance with the state of Louisiana Off-System Bridge Replacement Program.
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Butcher, a second from the chair. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Councilman Flurry?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 113, accepting a donation valued at $15,038 from the Faith Fight Finish Foundation to the Shreveport Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Butcher, a second from Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. Councilman Flurry?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 114, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana State University Health Sciences Center at Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Butcher, a second from Councilman Bowman. Any discussion?
Bowman was the motion. I was the second.
All right. So reverse the motion and second, please. No discussion, a call for the vote. Councilman Flurry?
Aye.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 115, a resolution ratifying the acceptance of a donation to protective equipment to the city of Shreveport from Brothers Brother Foundation to be used by the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, and there is one amendment. Amendment one provides for revisions to clarify this is a resolution, this resolution is a ratification and not acceptance of donation.
Move for adoption, the amendment?
Motion on amendment from Councilman Nicholson, a second from the chair. Any discussion? I call for the vote. Your vote for the amendment, Councilman Flurry?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. As amended, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for the, for 115, as amended, a second from the chair. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. As amended, Councilman Flurry?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 116, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 2,300 block of Levy Street in honor of Sister Margaret McCaffrey.
I second if he gives the motion.
Motion from Councilman Flurry, a second from Councilman Bowman. Chairman Flurry, do you want to make any remarks today?
This is a dedication for Sister Margaret, who had been so involved in getting to have their poor man's supper in November, and so this is something in regards to they can make that presentation at that time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to express my appreciation to Chairman Flurry for bringing forth this legislation. Sister McCaffrey did so much for so many people in this community, and this small recognition is very well deserved.
Agreed. Here, here. Councilman Green?
Also, Madam Chair, my, our church will be one of the sponsors for this poor man's supper on that particular day.
That's wonderful. Anyone else? I know that Sister Margaret meant a lot to everyone in the community. Councilwoman Taylor?
She did. And I think it's an honor to have her legacy to continue so much. I think a lot of, praise Temple and Bishop Brandon, have taken up a lot of those causes too, over in that area of Sprague Street. So yes, I think it's an honor to do this. Thank you, Councilman Flurry.
And for the votes.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Ms. Ewing, will you proceed with the introduction of resolutions?
Resolution 117, granting a variance from certain provisions of Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances relative to flood hazard prevention. Resolution 118, authorizing employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel and representation to the city of Shreveport. Resolution 119, authorizing execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Caddo Bojor Parish's Port Commission, the city of Shreveport, the parish of Caddo, and the Caddo Parish School Board relative to the commission of a disparity study of each entity's contact and procurement practices relative to minority and women-owned businesses. Resolution 120, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with Red River Waterway District relative to the installation of the LED decorative lighting and the roadway lights on the Long slash Allen Bridge, also known as the Texas Street Bridge, US 7880. Resolution 121, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the parish of Caddo for the design, construction, and maintenance of traffic signal at the intersection of Southern Loop City Road and Wallace Lake Road Parish Road. Resolution 122, accepting grant funding from the Department of Homeland Security for a 2019 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, SAFER, in the amount of $2,458,575.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved. Want to talk about that, Chief?
Motion from Councilman Bowman, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. We don't have to vote on this, but there might be some questions about some of these items for either Chief Wolverton or for C.A.O. Whitehorn. Do you have anything that you all want to add about?
Well, I'd like, I'm familiar with the SAFER grant from my fire department days, and if it's all right with Chief Whitehorn, I'd like for Chief Wolverton to explain. I think it's a great thing.
Chief Wolverton?
John Suttle, this is newsworthy. You might want to get your pencil out.
SAFER grant is a staffing grant for fire emergency response. A grant that's been provided by FEMA and Department of Homeland Security for seven years now. Each year, Congress dedicates dollars for fire services to submit for, and this is actually the third SAFER grant we've been awarded. We were awarded, I think, one in 2009, 2016, and also this third one in 2020. And this is actually off the 2019 fiscal year of federal funding. So we submitted for just a few months ago, and we're awarded. One of the great blessings of the grant this year is there's no municipal match. It is typically, you have to match a certain percentage, 25%, 25%, and 60% in the third year. This has zero match, so it's full funding for salary and benefits for 15 firefighters. So we're very pleased and blessed that we were awarded the grant.
And that's for three years, correct?
It's for three years. Yes.
That's good news.
Thank you, Chief Wolverton. Does anyone else have any questions about this?
Can I add something to that as well?
Yes, please.
Also, what Chief Wolverton then mentioned is that you will see an increase in their budget because this money is reimbursable. We have to put the money up first. They reimburse us.
That is correct.
Thank you for that.
Still good.
It's about $800,000 for each year, a little over $800,000, I think, for each year for the reimbursements.
Anything else? Thank you.
Good.
Did anyone have any questions, or is there anything you all can offer up about the disparity study from the administration?
Mr. Wheeler is here. He can speak to that if you want to, if you have any questions.
I think that many people would be very curious about this. Would you mind giving a brief overview? Very brief. And I'll tell you now that I think there's one question about whether or not the school board will be expected to put forth any funding.
Okay, that's my question.
That was my question. Mine's also.
Get off the board.
Just talked to Valerie and a school board representative about that a couple days ago. We was having lunch at Superior, and they said they broke, basically, but.
You can say the same thing.
It can't be more broken.
Y'all can't have a lunch at Superior. Somebody got some money somewhere. I could see if y'all had a $5 special or something, not Superior. You not broke.
Steak or steakhouse.
I should have kept the question quiet. I just could see, we did have a lunch, and I did bring that subject up, matter of fact, several times, you know, while they're part of this agreement, if they didn't bring any money forth. It was before my tenure. This was developed before I came on board. So, but I didn't want to stop the progress where we at. So I don't think, this is too important. We've been talking about this for over 20 years.
We have, I think, many members of the public, and maybe some of my colleagues, might not understand exactly what the disparity study would do, what kind of outcome we're looking for here.
Well.
Before we get into that, can I make a clarifying question?
May I?
Ask a clarifying question? You said the school board said they were broke?
That's, that was straight out there.
Just for the record, the school board had $40-plus million in a reserve after they got federal funding earlier this year. Just so you all know where we are with our reserve, at the end of last year, we were around $4 million, fourth, not 14th, fourth.
Well, I had issues with that, Mr. Mayor, and I brought it up several times.
We don't have to get into it. I know you have a question, but I wanted to make a comment for the record. If that's what you were told, I think.
That's exactly the words. We broke. But like I was saying, you know, my tenure started in March. This was developed, I was called in on a Zoom meeting, and, but like I said, this project is too important, and we, where we at, and I would like to see it, you know, move forward in progress. It's a very important project to the citizens of Shreveport. But if anybody have any questions, you know.
Councilman Taylor?
I don't think anybody is negating how important it is. I think the concern is, is that if they are inclusive of that, then they need to put some dollars with that.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, they need to put some dollars with it. That's just the bottom line, the buck of our taxes, go there.
Yes, I don't disagree at all.
They need to put some dollars behind that.
And if we can get, you know.
Madam Chair, I have to just comment that I agree with the sentiment that Mayor Perkins and Councilwoman Taylor and probably everybody up here shares, this may well be a very worthy and necessary project, but if we're going to partner with the school board in this, they need to make a financial contribution. They're no more financially constrained than we are.
I agree, sir. So I'll get with the chief, and we'll come up with a solution to that, one way or the other.
At that point, that was, that was my intention, which is why I garnered for the 150, set aside.
uh, the hundred and fifty, uh, set aside from the city back then, because I knew that we couldn't and wouldn't be able to come up with the entire amount, uh, so I pushed for the one fifty for, okay, well, councilman Bradford, first of all, was pushing for it real hard, and I knew he wasn't going to get it, so we pushed for, I pushed for the one fifty, we got that, but that was with anticipation that the other entities would try to, yeah, step in as well, so. But thank you for your efforts, I really appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, shall we continue now? Let's proceed with the introduction of ordinances.
I have received a request from SPAR to withdraw ordinance one twenty and one twenty-one from introduction, and if there's no objection, we don't have to take a vote on that, I can just proceed with ordinance one twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Ordnance one twenty-two, annexation tag number twenty dash zero one, and ordinance to annex property in sections twenty-two and twenty-seven, township sixteen north, range thirteen west, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, into the city limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordnance one twenty-three, amending the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to fees for the administrative, administrative special use permit. Ordnance one twenty-four, zoning case number twenty dash eighty-five dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning property located on the north side of East Seventy-first Street, approximately one hundred and thirty feet west Fairfield Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C-two corridor commercial district to C-three general commercial district. Ordnance one twenty-five, zoning case number twenty dash nine-nine dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Wagner Avenue and Hearn Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C-one neighborhood commercial district to R-one-seven single-family residential district.
Councilman Green?
Mr. Clark?
See my yelling, councilman Butcher?
I yell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got Butcher in, Bowman, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, y'all...
No, go ahead, go ahead, he already got him up.
Do I need to leave, councilman Green?
Well, y'all want to talk to you.
My first name, uh, Mr. Clark, is, we was talking about, Wheeler didn't have any money, so, can you call those food trucks together and see if we can get a little, uh, donations from them?
I think I got just the one in mind to call for you, councilman Green.
But tell me about one twenty-five, Mr. Clark.
One twenty-five is, the, I'm glad you asked this one, this is a classic example, may I take this off?
Yes, sir.
This is the classic example of, when we went through the process of remapping as a result of the Unified Development Code, we tried to make all of the, uh, zonings that reflect what they had, what the actual uses were, uh, there were some left out that had residential dwellings, uh, and residential lots, and the properties were zoned commercially. This is one that had that case, and when a person wanted to come in and utilize a lot for a residence, because it was part of a neighborhood, they wanted to come in and use a lot for a residence, they had to downzone it from the commercial C to the residential what, R-one-seven, and that, that happens periodically around the city because you'll see, uh, streets that are zoned commercially, but the streets are actually, uh, the use are actually residential uses.
Okay, so this will be for residential?
Yes, sir, this is, they had to do this in order to build a house or move into or expand a house.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councilman Green, councilman Butcher, then councilman Bowman.
Mr. Clark, don't go anywhere.
Told you.
You needed me, sir.
Yes, sir, on, on the annexation, I, I slipped to another thing here, so I can't see what the number is, um, I, I, I would like between now and, and the vote for this, for, for my colleagues to look at the fact sheet, you and I have talked about this, um, I did have a question for Patrick, uh, Furlong today about the death of the managing member of this, uh, LLC that's, uh, submitted the application, Mr. Young passed away.
I did not know that.
About a week or so ago.
James Young, it was?
Yeah.
Can't remember him quite well.
James Young did, um, but anyway, tell me what the, uh, the MPC denied this annexation, correct? But what were the findings, you did do a fact sheet of study and what the cost of the city would be, and then what the, the, uh, the revenue to the city would be?
It was, it was, it was quite interesting, uh, councilman Butcher, uh, we found that for a, a year, that the, the total, uh, annual revenue for this annexation would be three hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, and based on our calculation, the expenditures for a year would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Over a ten-year period, uh, that would be the annual, the revenue for a ten-year period would be three million five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty, six hundred and sixty, and, uh, the expenditures would be two million ninety-two dollars and five. What we found, uh, and we understood the, the reasons for, uh, you know, not expanding the footprint of the city anymore because the city cannot adequately, uh, address the infrastructure needs that it has, I, I did, and after many, many months, I, I get a chance, I reached out to the finance department to share it, ask them if this revenue is coming in, and this revenue is coming in every year, and the, uh, expenses versus the actual income are, are that great, uh, separated, could the city possibly set up a, an account to start building an account to deal with those twenty-year, uh, infrastructure repairs and replacements that need to happen, and they said it was very possible, I think that what has happened is that as funds come into the city from annexations, uh, the city utilized those funds for, as you know, uh, general, general fund expenditures and not make preparations for what happens when it's time to, to, uh, take in all of these infrastructure expenditures. But, uh, from this, we've, we, we concluded, uh, the board, the MPC board, and, and they were not incorrect, uh, one of the considerations they had was, your calculations are based on one hundred percent occupancy, what happens if the, uh, subdivision does not occupy, what happens if something happens in the economy, and, and that does not happen, but we still feel that at least at a fifty percent occupancy, but generally, uh, as you know, uh, these developers are, are pretty convinced that they're doing this type of development in an area that will develop, and you have a Long Lake, uh, a lakeside, which this is not an ex, uh, this is not extension of, but it's ri, it's a budding that, and that subdivision has done extremely well, and those houses are going for three and four hundred thousand dollars, uh, and the lots of fifty thousand dollars and up. So, you know, based on those type things, I think we will always have this, this, this tug of war with, uh, with the proponents and the opponents for annexation, that there are ways that we believe that there are some positive annexations, uh, and that all annexations are not negative. We also believe that in areas like this, if you add in the possibilities that has happened in some subdivisions, the commercial entities, uh, where they will generate even more types of revenue and provide even, uh, more services to the, the residents of particular areas, uh, subdivisions of this type will be positive and beneficial.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Clark, I, I'm, I think that with the six-month moratorium starting in six months, I think that there's a lot of room for improvement for us to start looking at impact fees, uh, taking portions of this money and, and putting it towards future, um, you know, future needs for infrastructure, I think there's all kinds of things that we can do, and I hope that, uh, councilwoman Fuller and the infrastructure meeting, we can start having some of these discussions, and I think this also might fall on the master plan committee, that we need to be having these discussions during the six months. This particular annexation, uh, I would like for my colleagues to really study and, and look at, and I'll be happy to take any of y'all out there and show you where the property is, because it is, it, it, it may not be an extension of lakeside on Long Lake, but it really is an extension of lakeside on Long Lake, and, uh, the developer of this development, both, I, I think that both the partner and the developer, uh, have a track record of, of developments like Burgundy Oaks and, and that have one hundred percent, they're, they're full.
Yes, sir.
So I think that this is one of those opportunities that I think that the city should look at, um, and, and I, I'm, I don't believe I'm going to say that very often because I've always been against annexation, but this one makes a little bit of sense to me. So I appreciate the work that you're doing with the MPC now, starting to vet these a little bit better and providing us with the information that you provided us with, because it was very good information.
And we plan to continue even though, uh, the moratorium will, will not go into effect for six months, we plan to continue to do extensive study on annexations and even de-annexations, and we are reaching across the country, uh, we're not just using only one vantage point of consideration and reference to annexations, we are reaching across the country dealing with planning agencies and other planning units in cities that, there are some cities where annexation is successful, and we are getting, uh, information from them to make better presentations to you and the MPC board.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, councilman Bowman?
Uh, I was just questioning about one twenty-five, if you can help me with it, have, have you received any, how did that happen, or the, how did the vote go on that, when...
Which is one twenty-five?
This is councilman Green's, um, no, I'm sorry, not one twenty-five, um, with the car lot.
Just one twenty-four.
One twenty-four, I'm sorry.
The, the Seventy-first Street?
Yes.
That's the councilman Nicholson's district.
Councilman Nicholson, I'm glad you asked because I wanted to talk to councilman Nicholson.
Which I thought was councilman Butcher's earlier until I, he corrected me and made sure I understood that it was, it was your district, um, because one, uh, state representative, Collins, she mentioned, and maybe y'all can talk about it, uh, that she got some different, uh, rhetoric from some of the citizens there.
Mr. Clark, why don't you just give us a rundown?
Yes, I'd be happy to. As, as I alluded to earlier, this is another example of Seventy-first Street, if you drive down Seventy-first Street, it's a residential street, uh, there's a school, but other than the school, it's a residential street, uh, as the, uh, developer or real estate broker alluded to, in the time that I think it was A&amp;P Grocery was built, uh, Shreveport and, and the country was not a car-centric, uh, type of, uh, situation where there were a whole lot of vehicles, so as the car-centric, uh, experience, uh, began to occur, they had no parking, so they, they placed a parking lot across the alley behind the grocery store, uh, and that's how this particular, uh, parking lot got there, it was never anything other than a parking lot, uh, but the citizens in that area, and, you know, I always, I keep looking at councilwoman Fuller because you never get, uh, forgiven when you add a industrial use into a residential area, even though most of the property is zoned industrial, uh, but we are learning with our community involvement and actually, uh, meeting with and interacting with the citizens that we don't have to live there, they have to live there, they want to live there, and they should have a right to tell us to consider some of the desires that they have, that they don't want the intrusiveness of commercial development into their residence. Uh, we took a ride down Seventy-first Street, and there are vacant properties down Seventy-first Street, there are used car lots down Seventy-first Street, there are all kind of areas for development along Seventy-first Street, and we started listening to the citizens and say, we're going to stop this commercial development on Seventy-first Street and not let it, uh, develop into your neighborhood. So we are starting to listen, we're starting to respect the needs, the desires, and the wishes of the citizens in the planning area.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and I'll, I'll just comment, Mr. Clark, that, um, yeah, I think for too long we had one set of standards for one part of town, and different parts of standards for another part of town, uh, I'm, I'm, of course, going to listen to what the property owner has to say, if they'd like to com, uh, contact me and have a conversation, but I, I, you know, I have to say this afternoon that I would not approve a car lot next to my house or my family member's house, and so, uh, I, I, I don't think that I'm inclined at this point to support that, uh, in, in Seagrove in my district, but that's, that's my present perspective.
And if I may, uh, unfortunately, councilman Nicholson, and I share this with you sometimes, I get a chance to have to answer the question, would you allow this in this section of town? Why do we have to have commercial entities because somebody says anything that happens here is better than what's going on there?
You know.
Why do we have to do these things, and it's an uncomfortable question to be asked, and it's even more to try to pro, provide a answer to, and there's really no answer, and I appreciate what you said, sir.
You know, I, I represent South Island, I represent Seagrove, I represent Broadmoor, I represent, uh, Anderson Island, and if I wouldn't do it in Broadmoor or South Island, I'm not going to do it in Anderson Island or Seagrove, those folks have the same rights as we have.
And that's the only reason that the MPC voted to deny, it's not that they are not business-friendly, it's they're saying that if you want to add a business, put it on Seventy-first Street where development is needed.
That makes sense to me, thank you.
And you're upzoning to a commercial three, which is a higher intensity, and it's much higher intensity than you would want next to residential.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Putting my mask back on, practicing.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Is that all?
Uh, is there a motion to introduce?
Sooner.
So motion from councilman Green, a second from Butcher. And Mrs. Ewing, will you proceed with the ordinances on second reading and final passage?
Ordnance one oh four, and my name, chapter seventy-eight, article two, division three of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to poles and wires.
I move to postpone, and I'll have some comments after a second.
Second.
Motion to postpone from councilman Nicholson, a second from councilman Green.
Madam Chair, earlier this week, I received another request from a representative of industry to postpone this legislation so that they would have adequate time to, uh, address it, uh, I'm, I'm certainly receptive to their suggestions for changes, but I will say again, as I've, uh, said before to my colleagues, that the idea for this legislation came from the city of Dallas, it has had requirements for reporting this nature in place for half a century, as best I can tell, and the city of Shreveport has got a right to require utilities which are used in our right-of-way to provide us information about what they have where, and I just, uh, I walked out of my in-law's house, uh, last weekend and saw a utility pole at about a forty-degree angle, you know, uh, not in the condition that it should have been, and I, I contacted SWAP Co.'s representative, he said, well, it's not ours, and, uh, it's, you know, it's been there for a year, so we just, we have to be able to readily identify who is responsible for the different, uh, things that have been placed in our right-of-way and require utilities and, and others to repair or remove, uh, problems as appropriate, thank you.
Thank you, councilman Nicholson, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilman Fleury, that's a motion to postpone on one oh four.
I heard something.
Y'all bored and asleep.
I heard something. Yeah, he said, uh...
Thank you, we got you, thank you. That passes unanimously, to postpone, let's continue.
Ordnance one twelve, a series ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fifty million dollars of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds in one or more series of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, establishing certain details such, such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenue to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement, and the preparation and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the purchase and subscription of certain escrow securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents, and authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement.
Sooner.
So motion from councilman Green? Second. A second from councilwoman Taylor. There's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. That passes for three, let's continue.
Ordnance one fifteen, closing and abandoning an additional portion of Sugar Leaf Trail in the Lindbrook subdivision. in the Lindbrook subdivision, units five and five A in section thirty-five, township seventeen north, range fourteen west.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Motion to postpone from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. And that's a motion to postpone on, on one fifteen. Councilman Flurry? Passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Ordnance one seventeen, an ordinance amending the 2020 general fund budget, appropriating the funds authorized therein.
So move.
It's a motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bowman. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. That's one seventeen, Councilman Flurry. That passes unanimously, let's continue.
Ordnance one eighteen, amending the 2020 general fund budget and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
So move.
It's a motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bowman. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. And that's one eighteen. Councilman Flurry?
Okay, I'm, I-
That passes unanimously.
Ordnance one nineteen, amending the 2020 solid waste enterprise fund budget.
So move.
It's a motion from Councilman Green. Second from the chair. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote.
All right.
That passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Ordnance one sixteen, zoning case number nineteen dash three-one-three C. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning a property located on the northwest corner of Linwood Avenue and Interloop Expressway, extending approximately one hundred and thirty-four feet west of, west of Ponderosa Trail and one hundred and forty-five feet north of Sugar Leaf Trail, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-three General Commercial District or Office Research District.
Motion to postpone.
It's a motion to postpone from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Nicholson. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Councilman Flurry, that's one sixteen, to postpone.
All right. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I need a ruling, I need a ruling, please.
I'm sorry?
On, on one twelve, I voted incorrectly on that. Am I able at this time to, since I was in the prevailing, prevailing majority, am I able to bring that back up?
Yes.
Yes.
For a revote? Would you ask the parliamentarian there to rule on that, please?
You can make a motion to reconsider, Councilman Flurry.
All right. I make a motion to reconsider, twelve?
Second.
It's a motion to reconsider on one twelve, the second by Councilman Nicholson. Call for the vote.
Can I get a second?
Who's vote? And Councilman Flurry, you can go ahead and vote on that audibly.
Okay, nay?
No, no, no. No, wait, just on the reconsider, you're a yes on the reconsider?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That passes unanimously. And now, a motion on, now that we're reconsidering, a motion on ordinance one twelve.
Okay, that passed six with one out of chamber?
Oh, six with one out of chamber, yes.
Very good. And, and, but, but, then-
And now we're, we're on one twelve, so-
Ordnance one twelve is up for consideration, and when a motion has been made, I'd, I'd like to make some brief comments.
A motion on one twelve.
Yeah, motion on one twelve.
And a second? A second from the chair.
Okay. Madam Chair, this legislation was a subject of spirited discussion during our last council meeting. My opinion regarding whether the city should borrow fifty million dollars to refinance the debt that we discussed has not changed. I do not believe that this transaction is in the city's interest. I respect that there are differences of opinion around the horseshoe, and I'm not suggesting that anyone has any nefarious motives in supporting this legislation. But as far as I've been able to determine, it would take payments that are due in 2019 and 2020, totaling about twenty million dollars, stretch those out over thirty years through 2050, and would result in our paying twenty more million dollars in interest than we would otherwise. We also would incur transaction fees in the range of one point five million dollars. And so I asked my colleagues to vote no on ordinance one twelve. Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Can, can we make comment as well, as an administration?
Go ahead.
Sure, I just want to make one clarification that, and I think you mentioned that it would cost twenty million more in interest, which is not accurate. The, the principal payment would be due anyway. So basically, we would just be paying it at a different time when debt service is low.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I had to turn a lot, look at this, and the, the schedule of payments showed that if we paid it over two years, it would be in the range of twenty million dollars. And if we paid it over thirty years, it would be forty-plus. But, but I think we all agree that it will result in significant additional interest payments over the life of the loan. Is that clear?
There, there is a transaction cost that, that would result in those payments being moved just because you, you know, are paying them in the future. But it's, it's not twenty million because that's a, that's a significant principal payment that you're, you would have to pay anyway.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. Councilman Flurry?
No.
Sorry.
And now it fails four to three. Mrs. Ewing, is there any tabled legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have no property standard appeals to consider today. We've already done the alcohol beverage permit. We have no MPC or ZBA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Mrs. Ewing?
There are none.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Mrs. Ewing, is there a clerk's report?
I do not have one.
Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communications?
I, I do, I want to acknowledge, one, the passing of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Our flags will be flown at half-staff for the remainder of the week in honor of the Supreme Court Justice, who was an American icon to many. Is, you know, in a time where we don't see much bipartisanship, she was admired by people on both sides of the aisle for her objectivity in the court. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I also want to encourage everybody out there listening to vote. I really want to, it's a lot that's at stake in this election this year. So please register to vote if you already haven't registered. If you've got a ballot in, in the mail, please fill that ballot out and vote as early as possible, just because we don't know what's going to happen with our mailing system, and just exercise your franchise this year because there's too much at stake. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Any council member have any additional communications? Councilman Green?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd just like to urge churches and individuals to make contributions to the Red Cross because of the devastation in Lake Charles. We have a significant number of people that, from there, living in different hotels, and they're in need of everything. On today, our church sponsored breakfast for a hundred and sixty-five and also dinner this evening for a hundred and sixty-five. And if you can contribute to the Red Cross, if your church can make a contribution to Red Cross, it's greatly needed, these folk are here. And we don't know when they'll be able to go back home, and plus, there's not a lot to go back home for. So whatever you can do to help the Red Cross, and with churches, they will allow you to get a caterer and package the food, and you can deliver it to different hotels that's on Financial Plaza and across our city. So their need is very important. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Green. At this moment, I would ask that we would pray normally for Councilman Flurry, like we've been doing, but we have to go to executive session. Prior to executive session, Councilman Bowman?
No, I just wanted to say I can't see how we thought that the school board, I forgot about that, I'm sorry, would chip in, and I can get them to help play for the crossing guards. That's it.
Councilwoman Flurry?
Councilwoman Taylor?
When y'all come back to the next council meeting, can y'all make sure y'all have my birthday present?
Your birthday present?
Yeah.
Tell us what you want.
Okay, I'm just letting y'all know.
Mrs. Ewing, will you let us know what this executive session is real quick before we vote on it?
Executive session is for two cases. The first one is Brightwell, Laura R. et al. versus City of Shreveport et al., suit number six-two-two-six-three-zero, First Judicial District Court, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. And the second case is Just Plain Fun LLC versus City of Shreveport, suit number one-six-one-seven-zero-nine, twenty-sixth Judicial District, Booger Parish, Louisiana.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
A second, a motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Nicholson. Do we actually devote on that, or do we just go?